Good morning, everybody. If I can have everybody grab their seats, please. We'll get started here. I'm going to call the order, the regular meeting for the Washoe County Board of Commissioners for April 27, 2021. And with that, we are joined this morning by Chief Deputy Clark. Will you lead us in a salute to the flag, sir?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Of course. Bob Lucy Chair.
Here.
Von Hartung Vice Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Kitty Jones.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. Deputy District Attorney Nate Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galacini, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, that takes us to item three.
Item three is a presentation and overview of the Washoe County COVID-19 Regional Information Center, otherwise known as the RIC, pandemic outreach, including the allocation of cares, funding, support, the mask on move-on campaign outreach efforts to vulnerable populations, and vaccination messaging efforts moving forward. And this morning, we have our Communications Director Nancy Lewinhagen.
Welcome, Ms. Lewinhagen.
Good morning, Chair Lucy and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Nancy Lewinhagen, Communications Director. And since February of 2020, I've had the privilege of working alongside of some of the most amazing communicators in the region. You're going to hear from them in just a couple of minutes. We've got a very high-level, short presentation for you, and then I'm going to bring my partners in. Rebecca Venus from the City of Reno, Julie Duhl from the City of Sparks, and Scott Ochsverart from the Health District. We started this whole venture about a year ago, as you all know. Lower-level activation of the Joint Information Center was initiated. By March, Washoe County reported its first COVID-19 case. We had fully activated the JIC. And you'll hear me now call it the RIC. We rebranded it and called it the Regional Information Center. And that's because we had so many partners. We had 22 other regional stakeholders, as we spoke on a weekly, somehow, sometimes daily basis. There we go. One of the first big lifts from the Regional Information Center was to start a regional website at covid19washoe.com, which was built in one weekend by our own Joshua Andreessen. I wanted to point that out. A very heavy lift, and I appreciated his work at the time. Since then, has had a huge lift from the rest of the RIC stakeholders. The site has been tremendously useful, and we've had 2.1 million page views so far. We were proud to be the first in the county and the state to fully embrace the virtual press conference. You'll recall Chair Lucy, yourself, mayors, the health officer, were in here a year ago, March. And at that time, we said this will be the last time we'll be doing this in person. Since then, we've done 94 media briefings, led, of course, for the most part, by our lead, Scott Ochsverart, and all of us lifting that. The JIC has been on-call every single day since March 2020, and to date, we've distributed more than 460 press releases. Every single release has been translated into Spanish and sent to Spanish media members. We archived all of the briefings on COVID-19 website, as well as posted all of the media releases in both English and Spanish. And we also sent them out via Twitter and Facebook. Social media, like with all of our messaging, has been a huge lift. We started a brand-new Twitter account, also in March of 2020, that promoted our regional messaging. To date, we've had 5.5 million impressions, and this is a tremendous figure, something we're really, really proud of as well, for a brand-new account, and continue to keep that active. And obviously, we all share it on our own social media sites as well. We knew we needed more, besides social media and all of the other avenues, as we discovered we need more ways to communicate. In addition to the daily updates, we took control of the narrative and sent out information straight to residents through a weekly newsletter. In a matter of months, subscribers have gone from 5,000 to 30,000 on that newsletter, and continues to grow. Since the beginning, Spanish outreach has been a huge part of our strategy. Yvette Contreras with IC Media has been a fantastic coordinator for the Hispanic outreach. We are very, very grateful to her. She took time to create covid19washoe.com Espanol from scratch to cater to the Hispanic community. IC Media has also worked extensively with many of our vulnerable populations on messaging, vaccination information, and all of our outreach. I know you're all aware of our mask on move-on campaign. A huge bright spot in this strategy, we worked with two PR firms, BVK and KPS3, to kick this off, Safety-Based Content Campaign. It launched at a perfect time, when we were seeing a surge in cases. There were several other mask campaigns running in the state, but none had the focus in Spanish and to the Hispanic community. We're very proud of that. In addition, we still see a lot of these mask on move-on masks. In part, we distributed 10,000 of those throughout this campaign, and we're very proud of that as well. For those of you not familiar, who or who may want a reminder, we have a highlight reel that we're going to show you right now, that KPS3 has put together for us.
Breaking news, there is a new positive case of COVID-19, this time in Washoe County.
Without community, we're nothing here. We're all in this together.
Remember local. Remember us.
The easiest way to be a superhero is putting a mask on.
Cases, hospitalizations, all going down.
Next tonight, the coronavirus and cases falling while restrictions are being lifted.
And the campaign pivoted in December to focus on vaccines, and we held several community town halls, and again, partnered with leaders to share the message on vaccination. The byproduct of this, the largest and longest regional communicator's response in the history and of the county. The RIC continues to meet bi-weekly, sometimes daily, with our partners. And I do want to bring in, my partners could not have done this without them. And I want to kick it off first by introducing you to Rebecca Venus from the City of Reno, then we'll go to Julie Duhl from the City of Sparks, and then Scott Ochsverart.
Good afternoon, Chair Lucy and Washoe County Board of Commissioners. For the record, I am Rebecca Venus, Director of Neighborhood Services here at the City of Reno. And I just wanted to express my gratitude to the members of the Regional Information Center and their tireless efforts this past year to keep our communities safe and informed. What began as a standard response tool, the Joint Information Center, has really turned into a strategic partnership that's unlike anything that we've seen in our community or even in our state. Normally, at the city, I have a four-person communications team, and managing pandemic communications along with city communications this past year would have been nearly impossible for us with the resources. But having the Regional Information Center together has given all of us access to talent and skill sets and capabilities that we otherwise wouldn't have had. And because of this partnership that we developed, beginning on day one, we were immediately able to provide information to both our English-speaking and Spanish-speaking residents, or even those with disabilities. So this commitment and this partnership that we built really has allowed us to provide critical information throughout the year. And this team continues to be a leader and an innovator in our state as we work to communicate about COVID. We've created a structure that's going to help us pivot and transition that messaging in the coming months, as we talk about vaccines, or we talk about any kind of enforcement or any of those needs. So I just want to thank this team, and again, recognize the work of, you know, Scott Ochsverart from the Health District, Julie Duhl from Sparks, Nancy Lewinhagen, of course, from the county, and the numerous other employees. These are just the point people from these entities. And there are a much larger team that's helped us support this program throughout the year, and I just appreciate them. And I appreciate you for allowing me some time to make these comments.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Lucy, Vice Chair Hartun County Manager Brown, and Washoe County Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Julie Duhl, City of Sparks Community Relations Manager. And I am a mighty team of one here at the City of Sparks. And I would not have been able to keep my head above water without this amazing RIC team. And I'm so appreciative to Nancy, and Rebecca, and Scott, and the many, many others that have contributed to this amazing team. And I'm so proud of what we've accomplished together. We each brought our own unique strengths and made each other available to help each other out. And I do believe there's always a blessing in disguise to everything we go through, even COVID. And so the blessing here is that although we knew each other before, and we kind of worked together, we had not collaborated to work together and strategize together. And that's what we've done for the past, seems like, many more years than a year and a half. But it's since last March, we have just worked so well together, and I'm deeply grateful to this team. And I'm just so excited to keep this team together, to work on other emergencies, or whatever we may go through. This team's in place to strategize and communicate, and I'm just very thankful. So thank you for having me.
And I'll just jump in here to Chair Lucy, Commissioners. I'm Scott Ochsverart, Communications Manager from the Health District. I just want to thank you all for the chance to present. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished regionally in this Joint Information Center. The way we came together, like has been said, it's just never been accomplished with these jurisdictions. And I truly believe it'll certainly pay dividends in the future. Especially, just want to recognize Nancy Lewinhagen. Her leadership was absolutely essential with this. She just has got instincts with her media background, and in strategy and tactics that just proved extremely valuable. And finally, just another shout-out to some of the other staff members from the County Manager's Office, Bethany Drysdale-Josh Randrieson. They were just extremely helpful and really needed in the response. And also, Washoe County Technology Services, Paul Burr, Quinn, Jay Johnson, just incredible help throughout this process. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, in closing, every single, every person on there and our team all made this lift. As we reminded on Sunday, when it was rocking and rolling in northwest Reno, our next emergency could be around the corner. And what I want you guys to know is that we have a team, we have a regional team that we can lift and do this. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lewinhagen. We appreciate the presentation, and thank you for all of your partners for joining with you this morning to present that information. Are there any questions or comments from any of the Commissioners? Commissioner Hill?
I just want to say bravo to you, Nancy, and all the partners. And information was so vital at the beginning of the pandemic, and making sure that people had the right information, the correct information. You guys did a great job of doing that. And to continue the push on the vaccines and masking up, I think that that's fabulous. So thank you for all your hard work, and we're behind you. However we can support you, please let us know.
Great. Anything else? Ms. Lewinhagen, thank you so much. We do appreciate it. Have a wonderful day. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item four.
Heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person, and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
Yes, we have quite a few people signed in, so the second name I call, if you will queue up, it'll make us go faster.
All right.
Ms. Janet Butcher, followed by Ms. Dee Alexander-Proffant.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
Good morning. Thank you. Hopefully, you can tell me what this sounds like. My husband's friend wouldn't let her visit any friends or family. She was made to stop all contact with them unless it's on the phone or computer. She is only allowed to watch the local school board meeting online, and her comments are pre-read and censored. She is made to feel like she is going crazy for thinking she is being controlled, and that she is being ungrateful. After all, this is only being done because of how much she is cared about. She was forbidden to go to the gym, so she stopped. She lost her job at a small business, and now relies on others to sustain. She was not allowed to go out anymore unless it's for necessities. And when she did, the places were chosen for her. She must wear a face covering, as people are encouraged to guilt-trip her if she doesn't. She is discouraged from large gatherings. She was not allowed to seek specific treatment for an ailment. However, now she is being told she must have an experimental medical procedure done, and if she does, she might be allowed more freedoms. If she were to comply, she may even be allowed to celebrate Independence Day with a few friends in her backyard. She is constantly told that this is all for her safety. Sounds like abuse. Oh, wait, did I say her husband? I meant the government. We have been conditioned to be outraged if another person did this to their spouse, but to be passive and compliant when it comes to our government. It's time that Washoe County is opened up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher.
Next up, we have Ms. Dee Alexander-Proffant, followed by Ms. Cynthia Miller.
Excuse me. Thank you. Excuse me. To respect those that are trying to speak, please refrain from clapping. This is a business meeting. Thank you. Ma'am, the floor is yours.
I do have some handouts.
Ms. Profant.
I will distribute handouts that Ms. Profant provided.
Thank you.
May I take my mask off for speaking?
Yes.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
My name is Alexander Proffant. I trust you received a copy of the two letters I provided at the Clerk's Office yesterday from the State Historic Preservation Office. The March 2, 2020 letter is personally addressed to me as a private citizen, where I'm a voting constituent, District 1, and a taxpayer. It addressed the need for criteria for the protection of cultural resources in our state. The second dated November 16, 2020 is addressed to me as the director of the Nevada formed charity organized and incorporated in Klein Village, Nevada, since 2007. The charity has been operating out of my home and has corporate books and work products lodged at the same parcel where I have lived since 2004. My home, affiliated with the address on the two letters, is the same address where the State Board of Architecture and I have been corresponding about the topic of Nevadans defining architecture conservation as a standalone profession apart from the world of design. As an aside, it is not uncommon in the architectural conservation world or preservation technology world for not-for-profit and education realm to be lodged at someone's home. Often, it is more convenient for all persons involved, especially as a charity in its beginning phase of defining itself. And as many of us who've lived here our whole lives know, it is only the Lake Tahoe Basin where a timeline of 14 years would be considered part of a beginning phase. I would point out that on the second part of the article provided to me by the SHPO personnel, which I believe is attached to the March 2 letter, states integration of preservation practice into planning across multiple entities is a high priority for Nevada residents. I would add, as the director of the public charity, the Tahoe Foundation, there is in the National Trust for Historic Preservation Information Series, number 53, 1991, of the National Trust publication, a topic titled "The Economics of Rehabilitation: The Economics of Real Estate." In this publication, the narrative focuses on real estate as a long-term capital asset. The narrative begins with a text stating, "In real estate, the return to the owner is anticipated to come from four different sources: cash, appreciation, amortization, and tax savings." This would be the functional purpose in formally establishing a state criteria for the protection of cultural resources in our state relative to real estate and an owner's inalienable right to protect her or even a public agency's controlled property. I might add on a personal note that any alleged unlawful takings which deposit persons, government bodies, or corporations into adversarial positions who need to work together with law enforcement where potential crimes against the revenue of the state are occurring is no civil matter, especially the assessor's database is one of the causal factors involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Profant.
Next up, we have Ms. Cynthia Miller, followed by Mr. James Bentham.
Ms. Miller, welcome, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. I would like to talk about herd immunity. It is something that happened when I was a baby, back in 1962, in Seattle, Washington. What our parents did is put us all together in one room, so we'd all catch the disease, and our body would develop antibodies to fight that. Recently, I gave a blood donation by Talent in Sparks and Reno, and in February 26 and March 26, they said I had antibodies in my blood. And I was wondering if they're saying that we have to have a passport with a vaccine, which I disagree with. Why can't we have an immunity passport saying that we are free from the virus?
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, we have Mr. James Bentham, followed by Mr. Carl Sweater.
Mr. Bentham.
Good morning. James M. Bentham, for the record. We just watched a video, mask on, move on, do your part. Commissioners, we expect you to do your part in evaluating the issues concerning COVID and the measures that are being taken. We read that in the video about flatten the curve. What would it take to flatten the curve? Masks, distancing? Did that work over one day, one week, one month, six months, a year? What is the scientific evidence that that is working? Also, we saw in the video, it was important to be safe and informed. We expect you to inform the public. The first line of a defense, I believe, would be prevention. Positive health measures to take to build up your immune system. We have talked before about many measures, vitamins that would help build up your immune system, protect you from viruses. I believe that this should have been part of this video. Treatments, there are effective treatments already that should have been evaluated and included in your forming the public. Ivermectin is one of these, and there are several others. But instead, we're talking about experimental shots. Where is the scientific evidence that they are safe? If they are If they are safe, why are the companies allowed immunity from any prosecution, from any of the consequences for these shots? Are there animal studies that they have used to support the safety of these? Today, I'd like to briefly talk about the review of scientific reports of harms caused by face masks up to February 2021. This is a working report published at Research Gate, written by Dennis G. Rancart, Ph.D. He talks about the government's onus to evaluate safety, risk, benefit, harm analysis, psychological impacts of face masks, psychological harm to the population. Please consider these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Bentham.
Next up, we have Mr. Carl Sweater, followed by Ms. Cindy Martinez.
Welcome, Mr. Sweater.
Good morning. The Washoe County Board of Commissioners must ignore the unlawful and unconstitutional edicts issued by Nevada's dictatorial governor and his China virus goon squad. Join the majority of other counties in our state that allow Washoe County to open completely. The governors lied to you by saying you could have your own reopening plan, then slamming the door on it before you could present it. This is the same governor who supports Nevada becoming a sanctuary state and allowing thousands of infected, illegal aliens to come in. Doesn't sound like he's too concerned with our health, does it? It's past time to declare our independence from this dictator. You were elected to represent the citizens of Washoe County and swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States in so doing. So start representing us. Ignore these unreasonable and unconstitutional edicts that have no backing in law. Have the courage and intestinal fortitude to stand up for the citizens of Washoe County. Mask off. Open the county and let us get on with our lives and get back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, Ms. Cindy Martinez, followed by Ms. Valerie White.
Ms. Martinez.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Mr. Edwards, staff. May I have the overhead, please? I found it interesting that the first presenter we had was talking about getting accurate information out to us. That would be information that they deem appropriate. As we can see here by this one printout, Facebook has deleted a page with 120,000 members where they're posting stories about alleged adverse vaccine reactions. Of course, you can't find any of that information in the mainstream media. Similarly, Democrats are pushing Facebook and Twitter to address 12 prominent vaccine skeptics. I would include on there Dr. Joseph Mercola, Robert F. Kennedy Jr., Dr. Sheri Tenpenny, and Dr. Kristy Ann Northrup, who, interestingly enough, an OB-GYN got me through an extraordinarily difficult part of reproductive health in my own life. So these Democrats don't like alternative sources of information. They seek to feed the group think. I choose not to participate in that. Kevin Dick in the Health District disapproved the plan approved by the duly-elected county commissioners of Washoe County. These people are not elected representatives. Kevin Dick, may I have the overhead, please? These are the unelected people that are making decisions for our freedoms. A dentist, a retired fire chief, an addiction specialist, an M.D., and an owner of a restaurant. Yeah. And Kevin Dick, who does not have any medical history. We did not elect these people to make decisions about our freedoms in this county. I will reiterate that we, the people of Washoe County, didn't give the Board of County Commissioners permission to cede their authority to these unelected bureaucrats. The plan you approved focused on maintaining a state of public health emergency that is not borne out by facts. The plan included response measures debunked by actual science, such as masks and maniacal disinfection of surfaces everywhere. The plan included and advocated the administration of experimental injections that are beginning to manifest in worldwide reports of adverse effects, including disruption of women's menstrual cycles, spontaneous miscarriages, spontaneous neurological impairments, other symptoms of vaccine poisoning, and deaths. Commissioner Hill is obsessed with vaccination of Washoe County citizens. And I have to ask you, ma'am, why is that? The plan continues to falsely assert a state of emergency that by casual observation and common sense does not exist. The plan failed to include, let's see, two commissioners, Von Hartung and Bob Lucy, have chosen to kneel before the governor, fearful of retaliation and of losing CARES Act money. At best, this is pure political cowardice; at worst, it is pure political prostitution. And I will continue to characterize them as the Neville Chamberlains of Washoe County.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Ms. Martinez, I will need your documents that you provided on the overhead, please.
Next, Ms. Valerie White. Welcome, Ms. White.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
First, thank you, Commissioner Herman, for your willingness to stand against the insanity of the emergency protocols approved at the last meeting. I'm speaking today to question why you, elected representatives, have ceded your authority to unelected county employees or boards. What is compelling you to disregard your duty to represent your constituents? Is it cowardice or fear? Are you now afraid to make the tough decisions you claimed you could make when you were running for office? Is it dishonesty? Were you lying to us when you promised to represent our wishes? Are you instead following orders from Carson City or Washington, D.C.? Is it selfishness? Are you refusing to do what we are demanding because you don't want to lose your lucrative elected position? Or is it ignorance? Are you truly unable to comprehend the true science that numerous scientists, research specialists, and medical doctors, such as America's frontline doctors, are sharing? Can you not see the propaganda branded as science that politicians and bureaucrats are pushing to further political agendas? You're okay with that? Is it oppositional defiance? Is your insecurity so great that you can't handle constituents demanding release from the, quote, "emergency stranglehold" you've allowed to continue? Refusing to end this so-called public health emergency has destroyed our freedoms and rights for too long. Is it greed? Are you being paid in some form or fashion to continue this unscientific, unreasonable, and untrue public health emergency? Are you afraid of losing campaign donations or some other payoff? Is it heartlessness? Are you unfazed by the harm these lockdowns and COVID protocols are doing to families, to children, to veterans, to the elderly? Don't you have any empathy for those who need to be released from the psychological and physical chains or policies about them? I ask that you take a long, hard look at what's really motivating you. You're allowing these emergency protocols to continue, and you could have stopped them. I ask that you take a long, hard look at your own character or whatever remains of your integrity. We're demanding that you immediately remove the mandates you have imposed on our county for too long under false pretenses. Do your job. Be the honest, trustworthy, brave, intelligent representatives we elected you to be. And for that, mask on, move on. I would like the county commissioners to research whether this is affiliated with the moveon.org.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White.
Next up.
Thank you. Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. All right, we're in recess until we can get control of these chambers. For all these chambers, and I will put our district commission in recess. Thank you. Ma'am, if you want to speak, you have to sign in for public comment. You have that ability. This is a business meeting. This is not a COVID task force. This is a business meeting. This is not a COVID task force, ma'am. This is a business meeting. I am going to ask you kindly one more time. Thank you. Can you please call the next public speaker?
Next up, we have Ms. Tracy Thomas.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to please sit down until... That's... Ma'am. Ma'am. Call the next speaker, please.
Ms. Tracy Thomas.
Welcome, Ms. Thomas.
It's kind of hard to follow that. Good morning. Scripture tells us in 1 Peter 2:15, "For this is the will of God, that by doing good you should put to silence the ignorance of foolish people." Proverbs 11:14, "Where there is no guidance, a people falls; but in an abundance of counselors, there is safety." I recently emailed a request to all of you to watch HBO's documentary Kill Chain: The Cyber War on America's Elections, released in March 26 last year. I promised in that email, I am here to fully... As I promised in that email, I am here to fulfill my duty as part of the educated citizenry that understands law and demonstrates engaged citizenship. The film captured how bad actors perfect the art of social engineering by fooling victims into installing malicious software onto their own computer and/or server. Lying to gain trust through social proof, spear phishing targets to bypass security protocols for malicious attacks, spoofing phone numbers, and a variety of other methods, rubber ducky, zero day, et cetera, to piggyback their malware on election software that can lay dormant until activated, then wipe itself clean so no evidence is left behind, some without internet connection, some done in between election cycles. The black hat hacker, cyberzist, has been proven to be a formidable opponent. This documentary demonstrates how Washoe County's election systems remain unprotected with very little accountability or transparency when held to cybersecurity standards mentioned. The film underscores the fragility of our election process and points to clear solutions available to protect us against sabotage. If you watch this film, you will agree there is certainly room for concern and improvement within Washoe County's processes, which currently disenfranchise voters by placing artificial intelligence, i.e. computers, between them and their ballots. As our elected officials, you have a duty to arm yourselves with any and all knowledge when making decisions for Washoe County voters. Much like having the option to vote electronically or by paper, voters must have the option to have their paper ballots processed manually without electronic interference that can compromise and manipulate voters' choices. Please stipulate this option in Washoe County's code and ordinances. And if you are averse to HBO, I also put a resource up there for CNN. They ran also a video back in 2017. And I hope you had an opportunity to watch it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Next up, Ms. Rita Pepe, followed by Ms. Kathy Kite.
Welcome, Ms. Pepe.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here in support of lifting this COVID public health emergency in Washoe County. We need to open up to 100%, get businesses going again, and help people recoup some of their losses from things being shut down. And we need to discontinue the mask mandate because masks are creating a lot of fear in children who don't need the masks. And breathing in your own carbon dioxide is not a good thing on a continual basis. And people without symptoms can't spread the virus. So if you don't have symptoms and you're not coughing, you know, if you're not coughing and sneezing, you're not going to be a liability to infecting someone. And the masks are not effective in preventing the spread of the virus. And there's no scientific basis. I believe it is a power issue, trying to control people. It's really frustrating not to be able to hear people very well, to see them smiling. It's not good. And it's restricting people's freedom. Our freedom comes from God, not government. And also, touching the mask totally contaminates the mask. Surgeons wear masks in surgery to keep them from contaminating the patient and the surgical field. If they were to touch their mask, they'd have to stop, change their mask and gloves, and probably the gown, too. So they never touch their mask during surgery. And I would also like to ask that the state legislatures be opened up more and less complicated, and also the Washoe County School Board meetings. It's unlawful to keep people out of these meetings by requiring a COVID test or a shot with an experimental drug. The vaccine does not work, and there's been so many adverse reactions that it's not safe. And that's been proven, as someone mentioned before, by Dr. Sharon Tenpenny did a video, Dr. Simone Gold, and Dr. Cahill from Ireland. There's been numerous videos put out by doctors that get banned and taken off of Facebook or Google or YouTube. And I believe that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pepe.
Next up, we have Ms. Kathy Kite, followed by Ms. Deanna Lane.
Welcome, Ms. Kite.
Thank you. I noticed that you started this meeting with a pledge of allegiance that states that we are one nation under God with freedom and justice for all. And as I heard that, exactly that's why I'm here today, to speak on the destruction of that freedom and that these masks are being used for all over the world. But all I can do is speak here to the Washoe County Commissioner Board. They are bondage over the people, creating fear in our children. And actually, a good example was that Rick presentation. And again, it mentioned, you know, it's a fear campaign. Twitter, social media, we all know that they ban people that don't agree with them. And so, you know, that's a good example of this fear, of this element of control that is not found in the Constitution or in God's Word. We were given the gift of freedom by our forefathers who contrived our freedom from the Bible, God's Word. These masks neither decide who lives... Or who dies, but rather pronounce bondage, unhealthy air, and they themselves are becoming causing problems. I am here, I am speaking the truth and love. This is wrong, and we are asking you to do the right thing by God Almighty and for us, His people, who you, by His grace... And I'm going to look each and every one of you in the eye. It's by His grace that you are a steward here, and you are accountable to Him first and foremost. I am here again to just repeat that we request the public health emergency order to be removed. And then I just wanted to say that I wanted to... I do request that there would be... That you'd open the school board meetings and the state legislative meetings. It's unconstitutional to keep the people out that really have a voice, but you have taken that voice. And so I'm really asking you guys to do the right thing. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kite.
Ms. Deanna Lane, followed by Ms. Kelsey Schroder.
Welcome, Ms. Lane.
Good morning. Thank you. I am here to request, to ask that you remove the local public health emergency and reopen fully 100% and allow our children and our businesses here in Reno, Nevada, to thrive again. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Ms. Kelsey Schroder, followed by Mr. Barry Holtzer. Ms. Kelsey Schroeder, followed by Mr. Barry Holtzer.
Welcome, Ms. Schroeder.
Good morning. My name is Kelsey Schroeder, for the record. I guess I have like a million things I wanna say, but what is it that hasn't been said? I'm also here again requesting we remove the local health emergency. Really undergrounds that, you know, I appreciate the amendments that you all submitted. It was very disappointing to see that they were denied. And I believe this is just what is gonna continue to happen unless we remove the local health emergency. There is gonna be no middle ground. It's either gonna be all or nothing. You know, when we asked to remove the local health emergency, and you know, so many of us are not for masks, it doesn't mean to fully remove masks. People wanna wear masks and feel that that's gonna keep them safe. Go for it. I just, you know, it's hard to have the division where you're looking at someone that's doing something that you're not for, and then someone's looking at you doing something that you're not for, and just having the controversy that's out there. You know, if you look at Florida, they just had an MMA, and some people wearing masks, some people weren't. No one was arguing about it. It's just everyone was doing what was best for themselves. And, you know, if they wanted to show up there, they showed up. If they didn't feel comfortable in that environment, they didn't do that. And that's really what we're asking for when we're asking to end the local health emergency is just to allow people to do what's best for themselves and their families. And, you know, in my opinion, there's not enough illness out there to continue to hold this local health emergency in Washoe County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schroeder.
Next up, we have Mr. Barry Holtzer, followed by Ms. Susie Howell.
Mr. Holtzer. Barry Holtzer.
Appears to be not in chambers.
All right. Next, Ms. Susie Howell.
Ms. Susie Howell, followed by Ms. Katie Burke.
Welcome, Ms. Howell.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. It's exhausting being up here, talking to you week after week with blank stares on your faces, and you pretty much don't listen to anybody. But I'm changing where I was gonna go today because your first gal that you had... I can't remember her name, I'm sorry. Who did the presentation pretty much got her wrong across the board. Namely, these are not vaccines. They don't qualify as vaccines. They're experimental. They don't even have an insert that anybody who's getting vaccinated by can look at to see what's in this concoction of poison. So, no, there's no vaccine. And when you start pushing people... A lot of her agenda was, "We're gonna push the Hispanics. We're gonna push the black people. We're gonna push people into getting this poison." That, to me, is one of the most nefarious, disgusting things that I've ever heard. You're pushing people to be lab rats. A, you have no science. I have never heard in all this time have you ever bothered to say, "Hey, folks, I see you're all so upset. You come here week after week." Have I ever heard any of you say, "We're gonna show you the science that we use"? Because I would love to see that. It's not out there, but I would love to see it. And as we're talking about masking, I don't know if you're all aware, but a new Stanford study came out. And it concludes that consequences of wearing face masks can cause health deterioration, developing and progressing of chronic disease and premature death. Is that what you want on your consciousness? I don't know. You know, and for those of you up there that have children or are maybe going to, do you know that these new shots are causing major issues with childbearing women? They're spontaneously aborting. They're dropping their flora out of their uteruses. But if you don't watch mainstream and all you watch is CNN, you're not gonna know that. I think it's time for you all to do some homework. Not just buy the garbage that you're being fed, but do research. I spend hours every week researching every side of the spectrum. And I can tell you, you couldn't shove that shot down me if that was the last thing on earth. And lastly, I would like to bring up, our own ADA says that if we have a medical condition, we are exempt from mask-wearing. Yet when we come in here, it's the mask Nazis, basically. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howell.
Ms. Katie Burke, followed by Ms. Kim Mack.
Ms. Katie Burke. Welcome, Ms. Burke.
Thank you. So most things don't have right or wrong answers. Usually, it's about trade-offs. These restrictions, mandates, and masks are all visible answers to a problem that give the perception of doing something. But after a year, I think it's time we all ask ourselves, "Are these trade-offs worth it?" Yes, the data out there is confusing. You can say these measures have helped on some level. And then you can look at a study like the peer-reviewed study published in the European Journal of Clinical Investigation, which found that the lockdowns served no purpose. Well, you can also say that mask mandates have helped, but then you can ask yourself, "How much?" For example, on the CDC website, you can actually find a report that did find that masks and restrictions do help lower case counts and death rates. However, if you look further down to the place where most people don't read, you can see the decrease they're talking about. It's between .7% and 1.9%. So what are we trading for a less than 2% decrease? According to a study from Germany, which utilized an open registry of over 25,000 children, they found impairments caused by wearing a mask were reported by 68% of the parents. These included irritability, headaches, difficulty concentrating, difficulty breathing, less happiness, reluctance to go to school, drowsiness, and fatigue. Also, have we even considered the subliminal messages we are giving our children where our friends and family are now seen as the diseased other? This is bound to have lasting imprints on their development. Now let's look at what we are not looking at to keep up the appearance that we're doing something. What about the division being produced by this mask culture? The rising depression rates, the rising poverty rates, the rising suicide rates, the loss of family businesses, the loss of childhood freedom? This loss of freedom over our body, the fear being induced by the media which lowers your immune function? The fact is that 78% of those hospitalized are obese, but nobody wants to talk about that. Yet they are pushing further into a culture of isolation and excess eating and drinking just to cope. Did you guys know that 80% of those hospitalized have a vitamin D deficiency? Yet our policies drive us indoors, away from the sunshine and away from movement, that would improve our overall health. So, if you guys wanna do something, then do it. Get to the root of our problem, which is our overall health. The fact that our society is giving free donuts as a reward for taking a rushed, liability-free vaccine is very telling of how far removed we are from what we need to fix. So please, incentivize movement, incentivize eating healthy, incentivize connection and hugs and sunshine. The current trade-offs are not the ones that I want for myself, my children, or my fellow human beings. Thank you. Choice is paramount. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Ms. Kim Mack, followed by Ms. Melanie Sutton.
Ask, please. Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Mack.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a Reno native. I was born at St. Mary's. And over the years, I moved away and came back. I love it here. I love the Truckee Meadows. This is my home. And I loved it so much that I wanted to come back and have my family here. I have two sons. I have a husband. And I wanna invest in this community and make it a better place. And while coming back was a dream for me, living in this now has become a nightmare because the masks don't work. Like the Stanford study that was mentioned previously, they work in alienating us. They don't work in preventing viral transmission. I've seen countless videos of doctors taking a vape pen underneath their mask and blowing it all out. And you can see it. It doesn't work. But thankfully, the virus only has a 99.98% survivability rate. So to me, like, what are we doing? Why are we doing this still? A year ago, it made sense, maybe, to start this and try these new protocols that we never implemented before. But now, after everything, why are we still doing this? Why are we still doing this to each other, to our kids? What's the psychological long-term effect? We don't know. We don't have studies that are gonna show us what the long-term effect of this is going to do to our kids. And I, for one, don't... I can't be silent. I want change that's gonna help us. Like my friend mentioned earlier, it's about trade-offs. Because the masks, while they don't help in do that, they do help in alienating people. They do help in raising other health concerns. People get rashes from wearing them all day. My son comes home from school, and I touch his mask, and it's soaked. And I don't want to wear a disposable mask because I've seen other videos online from citizen journalists showing their masks are infected with parasites. And those masks were made in China. So we can't trust the source for where lots of these masks are coming from. It's just, it's not healthy. It's not the way we were born to live. It doesn't do anything for our immune system to breathe in our expelled air, you know, minute after minute, hour after hour, if you work a job that requires it. What are we doing this for? One last thing. What do you want your legacy to be as commissioners here in Reno? Because we're at a crossroads here. You can either stand up for us and our liberties, or you can throw us to the wolves because this is the crossroads this is happening at. Do you wanna be remembered for standing up for us and defending your fellow citizens in your community? Or do you wanna be the ones remembered that ushered in authoritarianism under the guise of public health and safety? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mack.
Ms. Melanie Sutton, followed by Ms. Kaylin Sutton.
Welcome, Ms. Sutton.
And I do have a handout to distribute.
Okay, so I do have a handout to distribute. And it's the second page because I'm gonna piggyback off of Katie and Kim. I distributed the Stanford study last week. And obviously, you guys didn't read it. But if I can have the... whatever the thing is called.
Can we get the overhead, please?
So this is from that Stanford study that I gave you guys last week that you obviously did not read. But this is the adverse effects of wearing the mask. Okay? The masks do absolutely nothing, just like I told you a couple weeks ago. As far as the CDC, 2% effective. Well, I guess it's 1.7, 1.... I was being generous, generous. Then I'd also like to... Hopefully, I could get through everything. So this overhead, okay. So this is from last week. And this is from the Washoe County COVID. COVID. So since last week, total cases, 156. Active cases, down 15. And then recoveries, up 171. Deaths are exactly the same. So 668 deaths in one year, two months. That's .001% of our county. And then also, just so you know, that the opioid... Opi... whatever. Whatever. I can't. But that's doubled in 2020. And then also, I'd like to tell you about one of my friends, if I can get through it. There's so much. So one of my friends just got released from the ICU. Actually, she's friends of lots of us here. She just got released from ICU. She was in ICU for five days. They did absolutely nothing for her. They just fed her with steroids. They didn't treat her. So when we flattened the... When we were supposed to flatten the curve, that was because we didn't know nothing about this. Now we do. Now we know the treatments. And she didn't get none of those treatments. She sat in her filth for five days in the same nightgown. She didn't get sponge bathed. She didn't get... She had a bedpan to go to the bathroom. She didn't get to brush her teeth. She did not have a sink. I mean, how... This is how we're treating the people. Why don't we give them what they need to survive? Our death rates would be so much lower than what they are right now. And her name is Monica J.
Next up, we have Kaylin Sutton.
Kaylin. Welcome, Ms. Sutton.
I'm here because... Because I want this to stop. And my friend's mom didn't go to the hospital. And she died because she had cancer throughout her body. She didn't wanna wear a mask, so she didn't go to the hospital, and she died. She's... The doctors said they... She had two days left. But she died on the car ride home. But... This also took away a lot of people's lives, over a year of their lives. And I wanna know why. But... Why did this happen? The flag stands for freedom, but do we have any? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Next up, we have Ms. Carol Feinberg, followed by Mr. Donald Fossum.
Welcome, Ms. Feinberg.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. With all due respect to the Move On, Mask On Move On group, masks don't work. You've already heard about it. You've heard about the Stanford study. The COVID virus bug is so small, it can get through this mask, that mask, that mask, that mask, that mask, that mask, that mask. And that mask is made of propylene. You're breathing in plastic. What is the long-term effect of breathing in plastic fibers into your lungs every day for hours on end? Businesses have been shuttered. Our economy is stuck on slow. The governor has given the counties the job of deciding how they want to open or if they will open. Show some spine. Show some backbone. 13 months and two weeks. It was March 13th, 2020, when we shut down. It's now April 27th. That's 13 months and two weeks. It's now April 27th. That's 13 months and two weeks. It's more than long enough. People are demoralized. More kids than ever have been thinking of hurting themselves and suicide. You have heard it all. I echo everything that everybody has said. There's nothing more I can add. You just need to think about what you want going forward and what we want going forward, your constituents, your taxpayers. We pay you. We hire you. We elect you to do a job. Do it.
Mr. Donald Fossom, followed by Ms. Jeanne Quintana.
Welcome, Mr. Fossom.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to take you to this because election fraud has put people in position that have put unelected people in position. And I'm glad I come here without a script, except my shirt. No more house arrest with an ankle bracelet? Well, to me, the mandates and masks.
Sir, can you step to the microphone so we can hear you? Sir, the microphone, please, so we can put it on the record, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I shouldn't have stepped away from the mic. But I'm glad I come here without a script because I learn a lot while I'm here. I wish each of you would have to make comments on what you heard from us today. Because what I heard in one of the comments was, you don't know what's in the experimental vaccine. And guess what else you don't know what's in? Your election computers. And when I was here in 2018 regarding election fraud, I said, fraud may get you out of position. What we fear now is election fraud and improprieties put you in position because you do not seem to be representing us.
Thank you, Mr. Fossom.
Ms. Jeanne Quintana, followed by Mr. Kenji Otto.
Welcome, Ms. Quintana.
Good morning. I would just like again to ask you, please, end the, the health emergency here in Washoe County. I'd just wondering, do any of you look and see headlines across the world and other places? I mean, do you look in other sources besides the mainstream media? Because if you look all over the world, people are figuring this stuff out. They're rejecting the campaigns, all the stuff that even like your first speaker talked about. That's a marketing campaign. People all over the world are figuring this out and they're rejecting it in big numbers. I would think you'd want to get ahead of yourself because it's all going to come out. It's all going to come out what has been done and what's been done to people. Especially Dr. Fauci. I mean, the whole thing is just criminal. But anyway, I'm just asking you, do some homework. Look at alternative sources. Look up frontline doctors. They really care about what is better for us. So do what's better for us and especially our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana.
Mr. Kenji Otto.
Welcome, Mr. Otto.
Welcome. Thank you very much. So on April 22nd, the Reno Gazette had an article, "Health District City of Reno Rejects COVID-19 Reopen Plan Approved by Washoe County", and with a picture of Kevin Dick, right there. And an appointed official, not an elected official. You, you people are the elected officials. You people are the ones that made the decision. Your guy here rebuked you publicly in the media. And I personally, as a, as somebody that was in the military and boss, I would take immediate offense to that. And so I'm requesting that you remove Kevin Dick as the Washoe County Health Officer. This is my request and I'll do, I'll look into what I need to do officially to demand that he be removed. He's an appointed official. You can appoint somebody else that has some expertise in health office. I have more, more expertise than he does. I got 20 years of medical experience. I'm not asking for the job, but what I am asking is you put somebody in charge that knows what the heck they're doing and has a background in it. I ask that you consider exempting children in your group of 10. That didn't happen. So you've been rebuked, I understand, three times by Carson City. And so I believe it's time to declare a state of economic emergency in this county. And allow people to go back to work. Allow them to do what they need to do. Allow them to talk to each other normally. And, and I do know you all are trying to do your best. At least I know Jean is and Commissioner Herman. And I've talked to Mr. Hartung and Mr. Lucy several times. And we've had some nice conversations, so. But we need to exempt the children from all of this mess. Studies are showing that there's an increase of suicides amongst, among them. And we need to release them from their prisons. We also, I'm going to be looking into recalling the school board because for, again, they have closed, shut us off, the public, the people who elected them. So I'm getting, going to be getting real serious about things here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's everybody in chambers. We'll now move to the Zoom callers, Ann Marie Grant.
Ms. Grant.
Ann Marie Grant, for the record, Sister Thomas Purdy murdered by Reno police. Hogtied for 40 minutes during a mental health crisis. I'd like to go back to last week's donation to the sheriff's office for their robot. One of the commissioners suggested they bring it on down to the chambers and see how it works. Ask them to show you the, the gas emitting feature, see how well that will go. I'd like to talk about Justin Thompson, who was 35 years old when he was asphyxiated to death by Washoe County Sheriff's Office deputies Kenneth Cameron, Randy Hill, Joel Hospedar, Peter Mickle, Brad Mustafa, Kim Pink, Nicholas Tone, Travis Solano, and Paul Hubbell, who also asphyxiated my brother Thomas Purdy less than a year earlier. Justin Thompson, according to the Washoe County Medical Examiner Laura Knight, had only marijuana in his system when he died at the hands of multiple deputies asphyxiated to death. I'd like to read you some of the language that was used with Justin. Justin asked, "Why are you doing this to me? You're being an a-hole." This is all, this is the deputy's language. "You're being an a-hole. This is all on you. You asked for this. Believe me by your actions, you asked for this. This is where we are at. And we are not going to deescalate. Maybe you should rethink your decisions." The deputies have a brief discussion about excited delirium, which, by the way, doesn't exist. And I think your medical examiner needs to clarify how those men, two of them, she listed as excited delirium, what were the six criteria out of the 10? It doesn't even, it's not even a recognized diagnosis by the American Medical Association, by the way. The same male nurse from Navcare who was the one providing, then six deputies were on top of him asphyxiating him. Justin yells, the nurse, the deputy yells at the nurse to answer the questions. Justin begs for water. The male deputy says, "Don't effing touch my hands." Justin tells him he can't breathe. Nurse asks Justin if he feels threatened with six deputies on top of him. He replies, "What do you think?" Female deputy swears at Justin again. Justin then again tells him he can't breathe. Nurse clears Justin to be put in a cell. Justin asks, "Can they please let up a bit off his back?" No. Justin yells for help. Deputy says, "Nobody's going to help you. We are the help. And as I stated before, we are not going to step down until you are in a cell. Why? Because we don't trust you." Justin is then threatened with a taser. Deputies are repeatedly led by the lead deputy to keep him on his stomach. A deputy with the taser kicks Justin.
Next up, we have Mr. Aaron Katz, followed by Judith Miller.
Mr. Katz.
Hello. My name is Aaron Katz. I'm a resident of Incline Village. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 16, the TTD Mobility Hub. I have a written statement I ask to be submitted and attached to the minutes of the meeting. On December 19, 2020, I sent a letter providing evidence that what's before you violates the bond measure submitted to the voters. That was a November 2000 Parks WC1 bond approved by the voters. The purpose was to acquire and prove and equip parks, parks, trails, and open space. In anticipation of that measure, the Board of Commissioners approved a project list, which included the Incline Sand Harbor Bike Path. The list did not include a transportation mobility hub. The path was expressly described as a three-mile paved path along State Highway 28 from eastern end of Incline Village to Sand Harbor, plus three parking lots. And this project has been completed. The bond measure expressly stated that if any of the projects on the list were not feasible, the proceeds of the bond could be spent on another project on a list, but not on another project, not on the list. Based upon the representations of the commissions, we voters approve the bond. And thus, a contract was entered into between the county and the voters along the lines I've indicated. Now staff seek further amendment allowing use of an additional $326,000 of bond funds for the purchase and development of an Incline Village Mobility Hub. The hub is not an express project that was approved by the bond measure. I feel this agenda item is deceitful before you because it doesn't share that the proposed use of funds would violate the express provisions of the bond measure. And the ends just don't justify the means. Further, this action would impair the contract made with we voters. Each of you should be concerned that when you promise something to the voters, you keep your promise. Ask your attorney if what I say isn't true. Further, the TTD admits it may not even build this hub. It wants to get the proceeds as a placeholder. And if it subsequently turns out it's not going to build the hub, it's proposing to sell the land to someone else. And what happens to the money that they're asking for? They'll just get to keep it? This is very, very wrong. Please vote no against this.
Thank you, Mr. Katz.
Ms. Judith Miller, followed by Ms. Heidi Schenke.
Ms. Miller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Judith Miller. Also, I'd like to speak a little bit about Item 16. The funds TTD has received for purchasing the old elementary school were approved before there was any public comment. Now that the public has been afforded the opportunity to object, there is overwhelming opposition to this project. Once again, it appears the board will ignore the residents of Incline Village, who are not opposed to a mobility hub per se, but to the location. Locating a transit hub where there are no regional amenities is really foolish. The two biggest employers in this community are the Hyatt and Diamond Peak Ski Resort. A transit hub close to either of these would be preferable. Our commercial areas near the old elementary school are not regional attractions, but small neighborhood services. This isn't a golden opportunity, but a waste of public funds. Money for transportation and infrastructure is likely to be even more available in the near future. So we are not going to miss this opportunity. Use of money earmarked for a very specific list of regional parks and trails is deceptive to every voter in Washoe County, not just the ones here in Incline. Please provide the right funding for the right project. Do not approve Item 16. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Last, we have Ms. Heidi Schenke.
Ms. Schenke.
Thank you very much for letting me serve or letting me speak before you elected officials serving in your public office. I applaud your use of Zoom. I believe it provides you with feedback in a much more realistic and similar manner for all of your constituents within this very large county. Public referendums and voting platform integrity can be brought to new levels with a similar willingness to experiment and to offer constituents integrity. We're in a time of instant food, instant water, instant electricity. We could be providing instant response to people's immune system levels of vitamin D and zinc that would provide a real-time feedback and afford the person a way, a man, manner, a method to support their own immune system. A two-year-old PCR test is proven useless as a measure and it is consuming public and private funds. Your concept of hospital beds is a much more direct and easily measured method. Our right to travel has been supported by the court system for more than a century. Vaccine passports serve only the purpose of controlling the dissemination of experimental pokes. Developing a live referendum system and feedback system would be a huge step forward to reducing election fraud, to encouraging your constituents to act in a consciously willing manner. And I suggest that the first county referendum be about the innovation program and developing separate counties within the Washoe County jurisdiction. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Schenke.
Looks like we have Carol Black on Zoom as well.
Ms. Black.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, ma'am. The floor is yours.
Oh, good. Thank, thank you so much. I just wanted to chime in to follow up on the others who just spoke about Item Number 16. I too oppose the allocation of Washoe County funds for seed funding for the TTD and to access federal grants to purchase the OES property for Incline Village Mobility Hub. I understand that this may be a protected purchase while plans are being developed. And I'm aware of Commissioner Hill's recent article advocating better Tahoe access for all. However, no matter how I look at this proposal, the fundamental concept of locating a transit facility at this site seems completely flawed and allocating Washoe County public funds to this purpose indefensible. You've already heard the views about the funds not being appropriately used. There has been massive community input overwhelmingly opposing the use of this site based on safety and traffic congestion, both on Route 28 at the intersection and along the small local access street. TRPA metrics show that Tahoe's serious injury crashes overall are exceeding the target overall and are one and a half times higher than California's, for what that's worth. The temporary transit operation at that site was, is reported to have caused significant traffic noise and congestion by residents and was never fully evaluated for safety, traffic, or environmental impacts. And as you may know, or will hear, recently a five-year-old child was hit by a vehicle right there, requiring helicopter evacuation to Reno. The use of the OES site has not been planned. And any transportation plan inviting more incoming traffic to incline small congested geography raises increased safety, evacuation, traffic congestion risk, and net, and net adverse environmental impact concerns. Overflow parking for the Route 28 corridor recreation sites and the Shore Trail is needed, but should be managed outside of incline's congested central area along major access roads. I've given you, in the written feedback I provided, data about what was being sought through the site and how scary it sounds, even the reduced numbers they're tossing around most recently. Other agencies are reviewing flexible planning for transit and mobility hubs, considering local issues and risks while still addressing sophisticated transportation planning. Both TRPA's RTP and FTP updates have recently incorporated flexible concepts. And the TTD Board adjusted proposed wording to broaden the target geographic area. The bottom line, there has not been effective due diligence for an eight and a half million dollar project, which has proposed appeals, appears detrimental to the community. And there are alternatives for the Route 28 corridor that need to be explored. Sailing a broader planning approach dooms this project. A repeat, like the serious still unresolved issues with the East Shore Trail based on planning gares.
Thank you, Ms. Black.
Rhonda Tyser over Zoom.
Ms. Tyser.
Thank you, Commissioners. Incline Village residents are losing hope that you will protect their health and safety. As summer approaches, after a relatively dry winter, the likelihood of wildfire at Tahoe increases. We residents go on high alert, especially those of us who recall the Angora Fire in 2010 and personally saw the blackened forest and burned out houses. We know the reality that when, not if, there is a wildfire that threatens Incline, especially from the north, we really have no way to evacuate. The threat of wildfire devastation is behind many of our concerns with TTD, TRPA, and Washoe County policies. Any plan that brings more congestion to the basin is one we oppose. Not because we're nimby's, but because we're nervous. And any plan that brings more tourists into Incline increases the potential loss of life. How will thousands of tourists evacuate together with thousands of residents? If the wildfire comes from the north and 431 is closed, or from the south and 28 is closed? We in Incline have no escape. And the plan to bring more tourists by bus or car to the East Shore Trail, the Flume Trail, Sand Harbor, and Spooner literally scares us to death. We are maxed out now. All the so-called benefits of tourist dollars to our village economy will go up in the first puff of wildfire smoke. Please reconsider your plan to promote and support Tahoe Transportation District's purchase of land for a tourist bus hub in our village that will increase congestion and cause more deaths in any emergency. You are sworn to protect the health and safety of Washoe County residents. Please keep your health, your health and safety. Please keep your health and safety promise to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyser.
Mr. Doug Flaherty over Zoom.
Mr. Flaherty.
Honorable Chairman Lucy, members of the Commission, Doug Flaherty, resident Incline Village, Nevada. When I speak today, I'll be speaking and using the term NEPA, which stands for the National Environmental Policy Act. The proposed OES project, and speaking to item 16 on the agenda, the proposed OES project, including the demolition and removal of the OES, including asbestos abatement, construction coupled with increased visitor impact, will have a significant adverse environmental and adverse cumulative environmental effect on Incline Village and Lake Tahoe, and serve as just one more example of the TTD, TRPA, and their government and special interest quote-unquote partners' failure to adequately address under NEPA the adverse cumulative effect of perhaps several thousand Lake Tahoe Basin cumulative projects over the last 15 years. According to NEPA, significant and adverse cumulative effect impact occurs from the incremental impact of the action when added to other past, present, or reasonably foreseeable future actions. The cumulative impact NEPA analysis requirement ensures agencies do not impermissively subject the decision-making process under NEPA to the tyranny of small decisions. By approving funds for this project, Washoe County Commissioners are complicit in the role of adding to the adverse cumulative environmental effects of not only Incline Village, but the whole of the Lake Tahoe Basin, void of a necessary full environmental impact study. I've also submitted my comments through the proper channels, and there are six or seven items on there that I hope the board will read. I urge a no vote on providing Washoe County citizen money to support the TTD OES project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
I have nobody else signed in.
All right. Seeing no further public comment, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we are on to item five, sir.
Item five is Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything for us this morning?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioners, Commissioner Hill, I have you sign in first.
Thank you. I just would like to let the board know that Commissioner Jung and I went out this Saturday and cleaned up the Truckee River with the Pyramid Paiute Tribe. It was a really great event with a lot of people from the community. So that was a really rewarding experience, and I'm really looking forward to doing some Lake Tahoe cleanups coming up here in July, and I'll announce those dates later on. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. I do appreciate that. Commissioner Herman, I have you sign in next.
We're back to the same thing over and over and over again here. We spend hours and hours listening to a very solid argument from the people who are experiencing the downfall and the garbage that has come from this COVID thing. I know it's a terrible thing, and we've tried to handle it in a certain way for a long I think I've heard some comments from some of the folks that not only do the Commissioners have their faces covered, they've got their ears covered, too. So one more time, I'm going to request and beg for us to consider their request of producing for the agenda a resolution similar to the other counties that have done that, and give them a true vote. Let them see what we can do, because, I mean, I don't think we're showing that we're listening. So please consider it. Thank you. And one other item, and I'm repeating myself again, but I just feel like with all that's going on with election problems that we faced in the past year. I would love to see our registrar's office do a thorough forensic audit just to prove to all the people that there's nothing wrong there. What could be wrong with that? Then our doubt against us, that one more flaw that we're being accused of, is handled. It really would give the people a little bit more faith, I believe, and I would recommend it highly. I think it's part of our job. We're supposed to be trying to be transparent here as a board, but we have people coming to our meetings every time with the same things, and maybe we do need to listen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Vice Chair Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So some of you may have heard this, some of you may have not, a bit of sad news. Bob Webb from Community Development has passed away, sadly. There'll be more information coming, but I received the information yesterday. I'm just, I'm very sad for Community Development. He was a strong force in community development. In fact, Bob, going back into the 90s, was my trainer for the Citizens Advisory Board under Leslie Roylance, who was under John Slaughter. So it was a bit of heartbreaking news. I've received some information from a constituent that there's still a ton of trash on I-80 going east out to essentially Lockwood. We believe, and I've witnessed this myself, that it's coming from the trucks that are hauling garbage from California. Maybe what we need to do is, and I don't know whether this is possible, maybe legal can give us some information on this, but they're having to pass through Washoe County to get to Story County, and they're contaminating Washoe County going through to get to Story County to the landfill, because of course, the California landfills are mostly full. So the question is, is I know that this is an interstate, I recognize that, but they're still in Washoe County. So the question comes back to, is there anything that we can do? Can we create some kind of a system whereby we find them, or is it completely under law enforcement, under NHP? I'd just, I'd like to have a little bit of information on that. And then finally, nobody's more frustrated than me with respect to our plan being rejected. And here's my frustration, Mr. Manager. My frustration is, is that nobody, nobody heard this item publicly except for the Washoe County Commission. The Health District didn't hear it, City of Reno didn't hear it, the City of Sparks didn't hear it. City of Sparks supported it, but none of them heard it publicly. None of them took a vote. But yet, in fact, the Washoe County School District did not take a vote. None of them took a vote as a board. Why? How is it that essentially, with the leadership of our health officer, without his District Board of Health, how is it that he was able to make that decision in a vacuum, in my opinion? Just a question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. First of all, I'm going to start off my comments this morning reminding that this commission, that, you know, this agenda item is utilized for announcements, requests for future agenda items, or requests for info. This is not a place for us to talk about policy, you know, in regards to stances on issues or that. It's just purely, this is the opportunity for Commissioners to provide announcements to and ask for requests for agenda items and info, plain and simple, very clear-cut, within the agenda item is addressed. And with that, you know, the comments that were asked upon by Commissioner Herman in regress to this body, I will respond to, and is that the Governor clearly outlined in Directive 44 that the mask mandate is in effect until the state or he so chooses to remand that mandate. He also stated within his presentation that no resolution, no order, no could supersede his mandate, which is absolutely supported by NRS 414. And so, if we want to choose to be lawless, if you want to choose to refuse the masks, that is your own, that is your own right. Do as you will, do as you will, do whatever you feel should be best supportive of you, but that mandate is in place. Secondly, to answer the individuals for public comment, the Health District Organization is its own organization, even though it shares the name of Washoe County Health District. It has its own governing body, which is the Board of Trustees, which was pointed out. Those Board of Trustees make those decisions in regards to the Health District. We cannot, as county Commissioners, fire a Health District Officer or relieve a Health District Officer that is completely under its own organization. The forensic audit of the registrar of voters, we absolutely can look at. However, this body did certify the vote from the last election and supported that certification of those results. Those results are finalized and have been submitted to the Secretary of State, which has also certified that the results that she was submitted are on the record. This is, those are the clarifications I wanted to provide this morning based upon public comment. We did present a plan. We presented a plan that asked for 100% opening and no social distancing, 100% occupancy and no social distancing, mandating that we continue to utilize the mask mandate until the Governor so chooses to release that. That mandate was not supported by the Health District, or the Washoe County School District, or the City of Reno. However, we are working with those organizations to try to bring back an endorsed plan that everybody can get behind with, as we can continue to move forward and possibly erase some of this mitigation effort in regards to the social distancing and also the occupancy. So we will continue to work on that. The manager and the Assistant County Manager have been working diligently with those entities, and hopefully we'll have something for everyone soon to look at. Those are my comments this morning. Is there anything else that anybody has? Seeing none? All right. Commissioner Herman, I have you sign in. Would you like to speak again? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, maybe I didn't word them properly, but I did ask that those would be agenda items. That's what I was trying to do. So I'm sorry if I misunderstood.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. All right. Seeing nothing further, that takes us to our consent agenda. Mr. Manager, item 6, is there anything on the consent agenda we need to change or alter at this time?
Yes, we're, Mr. Chair, we're pulling 6F1.
All right.
But other than that, the agenda item should stand as this.
All right. So this agenda item, with the exception of 6F1, is prepared in your packets and ready to be voted on. Does any Commissioners need anything specific on any of the items? Seeing none, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with 6F1 being moved.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from, first from Commissioner Herman, second from Vice Chair Hartung. Call for, is there any public comment on any of these items? Madam Clerk. Seeing no public comment, we will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. Commissioner Jung, I had you sign in.
Yes, I wanted to point out for you, Mr. Chairman, I know you didn't forget, but I wanted to volunteer. Item 6F2 is another Commission District Fund Special Disbursement, and that is for the Vice Chairman, Commissioner Von Hartung for District 4, is donating $10,000 of his discretionary fund to the Moms on the Run event that happens every year here. And I know that one of their restaurants who does this is also in the Commissioners' district, and this is for women who are battling cancer. I think it started out specifically as breast cancer, but this provides the actual run and event, not only awareness and camaraderie for women, but it also gives financial assistance to women who are receiving treatment and need to travel, et cetera, which can be, as Commissioner Hartung knows, with a physician's assistant Stanford graduate daughter who went through a major kidney transplant. He knows more than anybody knows how much that money adds up fast when anybody's out of pocket, when anybody's trying to get care, and especially life-saving care. So thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, for donating so generously to Moms on the Run, and I believe that that is, ran out through Pinocchio's Restaurant, the matriarch of Pinocchio's, I should say. So I wanted to bring attention to the, for the rest of the Commission and the public to see that the Vice Chairman is in deep support, not only of his district, but of women facing terminal illness potentially, with his very generous, 50% of all of his funds went towards this. So as a mom who survived breast cancer, my mom, I'm not a mom, we thank you so much for your compassion, Mr. Vice Chairman, and for supporting the people that live in your district, especially small business. Thank you.
Vice Chairman, any final comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Jung, for the acknowledgement. So important. I have a direct family member who is a breast cancer survivor, and 30, I have to think about it, 33 or so, 34 years, something of that nature, with help.
She won.
That's right. She can be beat. She won. Is exactly right. And it's my honor to support a program like this. Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
Fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, Commissioner Jung, for, I did forget periodically, but there was a number of things going through my mind, so I appreciate that. All right. So let's move on. We've approved the consent agenda. We are, Mr. Vice Chair, do you have a block vote for us this morning?
Mr. Chairman, for the board's consideration, I would recommend that we put in items 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
Fantastic. All right.
That's in the form of a motion.
I have a motion to support in a block vote, items 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hill. I'll have, Mr. Manager, will you please read those items into the record?
Item 7 is a recommendation to approve the purchase of two replacement Thomas-Bilt 114 passenger buses from Bus West 21107, South Ohio Street, Carson, California, 90745, in the total amount of $159,026.50, utilizing Hemet Unified School District's bid number 061719 pursuant to the joint provision of NRS 332195, and authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to use Hemet Unified School District's bid number 061719 pursuant to the to the joint provision of NRS 332.195 contract usage agreement. Purchase of the two buses will replace two buses which have been in service for more than 15 years and have reached the end of their useful lives. These buses will be assigned to the Department of Juvenile Services, which contracts with several agencies to provide work crews that provide labor for several programs. The buses are critical to effectively managing these contacts, contracts, sorry. Item 8 is a recommendation to approve the purchase of three replacement 66,000 gross vehicle weight truck cab chassis with dump body and spreader and snowplow in the amount of $802,791,000. I'm sorry, $802,791,000. What did I say? 791. From Velocity Truck Centers, 1550 East Gregg Street, Sparks, Nevada, 89431, utilizing Washoe County bid number 3109-20, approved by the Board of County Commissioners on November 20th, 2019, and authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to use Washoe County bid 3109-20 contract usage agreement. The purchase of these, of the three trucks will replace three trucks which have been in service for more than 15 years and have reached the end of their useful lives. Item number 9 is a recommendation to approve future reimbursements to Truckee Meadows Water Authority in the estimated amount of $182,200 for planned capital improvements to certain retrochlorothene? Is that how you say that? Yeah, that is. Remediation facilities located in the central Truckee Meadows pursuant to the Washoe County, Nevada District Number 24 groundwater remediation agreement for ownership, operation, and maintenance of certain remediation facilities, and for the reimbursement of certain expenses between Washoe County and Tamwa, and upon receipt of notice, direct the comptroller to make the proper payment in the amount not to exceed $190,000. Item 10 is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement for the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the Washoe County Regional Shooting Facility Road and Drainage Improvement Project to construct a new parking and improve drainage along the entrance road. This project is being funded through an endow and cash and bond match from Washoe County. Staff recommends Aspen Developers Corporation in the amount of $138,000, and approve bid alternatives, number 1 and 2 totaling $29,260, and approved a separate $25,000 contingency fund for total project amount of $192,260. Item 11 is a recommendation to retroactively accept an FY21 Nutritional Services Incentive Program sub grant award from the State of Nevada and Disability Services Division in the amount of $331,667 with no county match, retroactive from October 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2021, to supplement food costs for the Older Americans Act Title II. Congregate and home-delivered meal programs authorize the Director of the Human Services Agency to retroactively execute the grant documents and direct the comptroller's office to make the necessary budget adjustments. Item number 12 is a recommendation to approve an FY20 Emergency Management Performance Grant from the State of Nevada Division of Emergency Management, awarding $170,877, no county match, to be used for partial funding of the Washoe County Emergency Management Administrator Consulting Services for Avalanche and Weather Advisory Services and other operating expenses for the Regional Emergency Operations Center, retroactive from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2021. If approved, authorize the county manager or his designee to sign the grant award documents when received. Item number 13 is a recommendation to authorize human resources to create one FTE Home Services Coordinator position, one FTE Housing and Grant Specialist position, two FTE Management Analyst positions, and one FTE Program Assistant position as evaluated and approved by the Washoe County Job Evaluation Process, and to begin the recruitment process. Positions are not to be hired prior to receiving final budget authority, as will be presented and detailed to the commission in the FY22 County Managers' Final Recommended Budget on May 18th, 2021. These positions are being proposed in support of addressing regional homelessness and transition of homelessness services to Washoe County. Item number 19, I'm sorry, item number 14, not 19, is a recommendation to approve the Forensic Support Services Agreements between Washoe County on behalf of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office and various local law enforcement agencies. Elko Band Trial, Tribal PD, $1,500, Fallon PD, $69,049, Lakes Love Lock Colony Police Department, Love Lock Paiute Tribe Police Department, $1,500 for the Reno Fire Department, $3,000 for the Sparks Police Department, $689,500 for the Pershing County Sheriff's Office, $44,002 for forensic laboratory services for the retroactive term of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, with a total income of $808,551. Item, that's it.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the tongue twister, tetrachloroethene?
Say that again, sir.
Tetrachloroethene.
Tetrachloroethene.
Yes. It's a solvent. I believe that's the way it's pronounced. It's a solvent. That's what our groundwater remediation.
Thank you.
It's volatile.
Coming from the water master himself, he's got it down. All right. He dreams about this stuff. Yeah, you, oh, you drink it, you dream about it. I have a feeling that all of the above. All right. So, all of those items have been read into the record at this time. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on any of those items?
There is not.
All right. Seeing no public comment on any of those items, I'll bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Manager, that takes us to Item 15, sir.
Item 15 is a presentation and update on FY2021 Third Quarter Status Report from the Washoe County Regional Detentions Facility to include security of the jail, conditions of confinement, staffing, and medical care of inmates housed at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, acknowledged receipt of report. And today, we have Chief Deputy Clark in the chambers.
Welcome, Chief Deputy.
Thank you, sir.
Always good to see you.
Mr. Manager, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners, thank you once again for having me for what we think is a very important report, and we will, we are happy to give this report and will, will continue to give this report. I'll be giving a report on the status of the Washoe County Detention Facility for the third quarter. The next report, just for your information, will be our annual report for the fiscal year that ends June 30th. So, we will try to get that as soon as we can get on your busy agenda for July. Before I get started, I just want to say on behalf of Washoe County Sheriff Darren Balaum and the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, thank you, Commissioners, for your continued tenacity, hard work, and support. I know that these are difficult times, and I don't think anybody envies you for the position and the decisions that you have to make on a daily basis. This report includes the welfare of the inmates at the Washoe County Detention Center, the health of these inmates, access to medical care, infectious diseases, environment control, environmental control, safety of inmates, and about out-of-cell time. As with my last quarterly report, I did keep this in there so that the community sees that we did have an extensive plan when COVID set off in March of 2020 to try to minimize the spread in our facility. As you know, we were, we feel we were extremely successful. We were able to keep it out of the jail until September or October, once the disease started spreading. Just like we see in other infectious diseases such as influenza, it spreads very rapidly in a confined space where you have a lot of people. And so, we did experience that, and I'll give you the update as the report unfolds. Some more updates for, for the third quarter. We still do have two intake isolation units. What happens when somebody is arrested by a user agency, which we have over 30 in our community, they are isolated for 10 days with that day group. So, everybody that is arrested in a 24-hour period stays together throughout that isolation period before we introduce them to the general population of our jail. This says the COVID-19 quarantine unit is House 11. I'm happy to report since I wrote this presentation, we have actually closed the COVID, the quarantine unit. And what we will do when there's a need or when we have a positive inmate, we will utilize either a special housing unit or our medical unit to ensure that we, we decrease the spread. And once again, if there was ever a need, if we did experience another spread, spread within the facility, we would absolutely open up another quarantine unit to, to ensure that those inmates aren't spreading it to other inmates. We've also reduced, and this was out of necessity, as you'll see in this presentation, is our booking numbers, our average daily population numbers are going up. Not only is this due to ending of the COVID, and, but it's more agencies that are arresting and bringing to our facility, but it also has to do with every spring, summer, our, our numbers at the jail go up as more people get out and about. So, we've had to reduce the number, the day groups. We did ensure that the day groups were isolated for 14 days up until just recently. We've actually reduced that to 10 days now. So, they'll be isolated for 10 days instead of 14 days, again, and tested before they're sent out to general population. During this quarter, 107 inmates were tested, and these tests are obviously the state laboratory. In addition to the state lab tests, we had over 100 rapid scan tests, and those tests are used for somebody with signs and symptoms, and then they were, they're secured or backed up by the state lab tests. And then, we had, during this quarter, 29 total positive inmates. Our jail inoculation plan continues. Obviously, this was interrupted during this quarter with the reported blood clot issues that Jansen was having. Our medical team did a great job at ending using Jansen until more information was available, but it was necessary to continue to, to offer vaccinations in their, their inoculation plan. So, they did order 200 Moderna tests, which they will continue using, although Jansen has been reinitiated and allowed to be used. So, we will be talking with them and working with the Department of Health. Today, I'm happy to report we have zero COVID-positive inmates within our jail. This quarter, 195 inmates were inoculated, 182 with Jansen, 13 with Moderna, 95 were high-risk inmates, 13 inmates were over the age of 65. So, NAF Care has been doing an incredible job, and I'll introduce you to our Health Services Administrator here a little bit later, but, but they've taken this really upon themselves to go to every single housing unit and just give information about the vaccine. And I think that when somebody's educated, then they get to make a better decision for themselves. And so, it's not being mandated throughout the jail, it is being offered. And if, if our population should choose to accept the vaccination, then our NAF Care does provide it to them. The next is some medical data for the jail. What I would like to highlight in this slide is that you'll see that our numbers continue to go up, not only in population, but if you look at the siouawa and cows monitoring, this is like opiate detox and alcohol detox, and you can see that March, we're getting a lot more that are coming in. This is partially related to the weather changing, but it's also the increase from our population. When our population increases, especially during this time coming out of COVID, as you can imagine, we have an underserved population that either are on the streets, or they come into our facility because they're trying to clean up businesses or downtown, or whatever the case may be. And so, they, there are increased medical issues with this underserved population. So, we are definitely seeing that in our numbers. You all have heard Sheriff Balaum talk and myself talk about the need for a new infirmary at the jail, and that will continue to be a priority of Sheriff Balaum. The next slide is another slide on the medical data for the quarter. I would like to bring your attention to the mental health area, which is in the middle of the slide. As you can see, again, increases each month with the most in February, but our mental health team is constantly striving to see more inmates and do more assessments within the jail. We've, we've, as I reported last time, we are seeing a huge increase in the mental health population of our jail, which is, it's a struggle to deal with based on the special watch cells and the high rates of suicide and, and those averted suicides within our jail. And again, this increase is due to arrests that are being made, and the inmates are just more acute, which just means that they have more, more medical issues that have to be addressed. Some, some more stats as far as medical goes this month, or this quarter. We had over 1,100 discharge referrals. This goes with the Detention Services Unit and the Sheriff's Plan to really try to reduce recidivism. And I think COVID has interrupted this a little bit, but we are, we are on track and doing everything we can to provide services to inmates to give them what they need so they don't come back, you know? And, and that is the goal of reducing recidivism, is getting them the services, the treatment that they need, so they don't come back to jail. Special need flags for this quarter, 111, ER referrals 72. ER referrals are huge because that's when somebody has been booked into our facility, and there is a medical need that's above the scope of what our NAF Care team can provide at the facility. 699 worker clearances. These are workers that do everything at the jail, from cook meals to clean the facility to provide work to the community through outside work crews. Grievances, there was 39 grievances, and 26 medical refusals. Medical refusals, I don't like using the word refusal, we use it just for, so people understand it, but it's really, we're denying access to the jail until they're medically cleared through the hospital. cleared through the hospital. And so that can be anything from heart conditions to accidents that they were involved in prior to arrest, that they weren't cleared through the hospital. It's really a risk management effort. Well, for the inmates, the jail continues to seize, see a rise of our mental health population. Housing Unit Three, which is our mental health unit and the medical unit are consistently at capacity. And this includes cells within our intake area that are special watch cells. Those cells are basically padded cells that have cameras. It is definitely manpower intensive because they have to be checked on every 15 minutes and our staff has to ensure that they're okay every 15 minutes. Special watch cells at capacity, suicide attempts were up 136% from last quarter. Again, with the rise of our population and averted attempts were even up 34%. And suicide attempts, I know I've probably said this before, suicide attempts is an actual attempt. That means they put something around their neck, they did something to start the process of committing the act. And then averted attempts can be everything from them asking for help or saying that they need help or talking about it. Or, you know, we, we may have a, another inmate with a cellie that says, hey, you know, his daughter just died or his family member just died or something like that. So we are always constantly checking on those people to ensure that their mental health is a priority and that they don't need additional services if there's something that impacts them from the outside. Our bunk project is moving forward. I can't thank the assistant county managers and the county managers enough for, for helping us with these projects. The prototypes are installed at the jail. Once they are approved, there will be over 700 bunks that are fabricated so that there's not gaps in the bunks. And we've seen over the years is that provides a ligature access for those that, that try to commit suicide. So we want to do everything we can to prevent that. Numbers for the jail itself, as you can see, this is the average daily population and the first is the fiscal year 2021 for this third quarter. And then the lower range, four-year average in the upper range. As, as you've seen before, COVID has, did reduce our population, although we are starting to see that population increase. I think it's a little too early to say it's, it's because everybody's getting back out because we see the increases again this time of year, every year due to the, due to the summer months and, and nice weather. But we are, as you'll see in, in one of the next slides, is that we are seeing an increase in bookings as well, which again shows that communities are opening up. Bookings, as you can see, I have from fiscal year 17, 18, all the way up through present. This is third quarter statistics and you can see that in March was a pretty significant increase from January and February, as we've seen in, in all the other statistics. Our average or our, our, our population today was 974. So again, we see an increase over the weekend. Court Services does a phenomenal job. I can't, can't thank them enough for helping us get people out on, on OR, own recognizant releases and bail. The next slide is the average length of stay, the length of stay. As you can see, that number has gone up this year more than likely due to COVID. And, and we are, we are saying, I said this last quarter, we are starting to see a little bit of change of the population of seeing more felonies and more severe criminal acts by our inmates and, and that obviously causes the length of stay to go up. But also with the courts shut down, they are opening, they are starting to do trials now. And we, we have been working with them tirelessly on getting the courts reopened, but that number we will see go down as the courts get through some of their backlog and, and these are going. Our staff, I can't, I can't thank our staff enough. We are constantly reviewing these type of numbers to ensure staff is striving to increase efficiencies. As an example, over the past three years, we have decreased the time an individual is kept in the booking lobby from over well over 12 hours to under nine hours at this point. So the importance of that is when somebody comes into our facility, we either want to get them out, right, on, on OR or a bail or something like that, or we want to get them back into a housing unit where they can rest and they can have a meal and things like that. We do provide food during the, in the intake lobby, but you know, people want, want to move through the process. It also makes a big deal when somebody has medications and different things like that, that they're not sitting in the lobby for extended periods of time. So we need, made a number of changes to reduce that wait time in the lobby and, and we're going to continue trying to keep that lower and lower. Third quarter jail data from inside the jail, battery by inmates, inmate on inmate, we had 16 this month. Last quarter it was nine. We had inmate versus staff last, or this quarter we had one. Last quarter I believe there were five, so that has decreased. And then fights averted, we had 39 averted this quarter where we had, I believe, 29 last quarter. Suicide averted this quarter, we had 277, last quarter was 206, so that did go up. Attempts this quarter, we had 26, where we had 11 last quarter, again, had gone up and thankfully zero completed and zero in custody deaths. Some of our detention services unit stats that you can see is our courtesy transports, inmate assistant program transports, the inmate assistant program transports are those programs in partnership with the courts and the judges. Releases and then return to custody or recidivism, those were down this quarter from last, which we love to see that only three of three inmates, one from each month. These are inmates that we've actually helped with some type of services or referrals that we see come back. So we release lots of people every day and to see three and a quarter come back that we've actually touched and tried to help, we know what we're doing works. And that's why it's so important that we continue to get your support and the services needed to continue the programs that we provide at the detention facility. As I told you last time, each presentation, I do want to highlight a different area of the Washington County Sheriff's Office or the jail in particular. Today, I'm going to highlight our NAF Care medical team. This is the contract, contractor for the Washington County Detention Facility. And I brought with me our Health Services Administrator, Pete Ledlow. So Pete is relatively new to the sheriff's office. You've been there?
Little over a year and a half.
Little over a year and a half when we started our medication assisted treatment. As you can see, he's a graduate of BYU, Carrington College, has lots of different degrees, is currently back in school trying to get his master's degree in nursing, but he specializes in behavioral health and addiction recovery. Now, why is that important? Because you know how important our medication assisted treatment program is at the jail and we've been trying hard to increase that program and get a national certification. Pete Ledlow has helped us do that and we are extremely thankful for him. Also at the, for NAF Care, our medical director is Eloy Etuarte. Dr. Etuarte is a graduate of USC, was a professor at UCLA. He's been in the medical field as a doctor for over 45 years through, has experience at the Veterans Hospital. He's an endocrinologist by trade, so he does care about health and vitamins and things like that. And I can tell you that he is one of the reasons that we've seen an increase of the overall health of inmates at our jail. And the next is Dr. Angeline Lawrence. She's our mental health director. She is a, a local. She graduated from the University of Nevada School of Medicine and then right after that went back and graduated in the School of Psychiatry. So she's not only a medical doctor, but also a psychiatrist, over 25 years in the field. She leads our mental health team, which consists of a part-time, another part-time psychiatrist, a mental health physician's assistant, a psych RN and six licensed clinical social workers. I'm almost done, I'm sorry. The next slide is, is some of the highlights from NAF Care and our contract with them. NAF Care took over the contract for Washington County Detention Facility in 2016. As you know, we had some issues with our last medical provider and the transition was literally overnight. It took 30 days and they were in the facility, running the entire facility. There was, this was a, a dark time for the sheriff's office. We started having a lot of in custody deaths and a lot of problems. And I, and I can tell you, they have done a, a great job during their contract. We've seen an increased overhaul health of the inmates and this is truly due to Dr. Etuarte, vitamin, and things that he's, he noticed when he first took over as far as vitamin deficiencies, special diets, advanced wound care and things of that nature. Increased mental health staff, just in the, in the last several years, they've increased with a physician's assistant, a psych RN and three more part-time LCSW, user licensed clinical social workers. The certified medication assisted treatment program, as you know, we've been working, Pete, Mr. Ledlow has been working his tail off at getting this certified. I'm happy to report to you that we have certifications from the DEA, the State of Nevada, SAMPA and CASAT or SAPTA. The only one that we're waiting on now is the NCCHC or the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. And that is already scheduled, so they're going to come in and inspect the program. And that's more of just a, it's not necessarily part of a certification, but more of our medical access for the, for the jail. They've had over 100 inductions and MAT referrals leading to Subbutex and/or Vivitrol treatment once the inmate goes out. This is usually when somebody is, we have a, a treatment source for them outside of our facility. And so the, the greatest thing about a MAT program is that our medical staff are able to start treating the patient or the inmate prior to release into a treatment program. So that increases their chances of success on the outside. They've also had 23 Vividol, Vivitrol inductions prior to release to treatment programs. Vivitrol is a, basically used to thwart their, their appetite for opiates. And it's, it's being very, very successful. And then inmate medical evaluation initiated intake. NAF Care were the ones that said, by law, we have 14 days to do a medical assessment on an inmate. And a lot of that is, is due because when somebody comes in, you know, and they're released within say 12 hours, why do you want to do a medical assessment if they're coming in one door and out the other? So it's lots of resources and things like that. Through our partnership with NAF Care, they're the ones that change this and you're seeing this across the nation nowadays where they're doing a medical evaluation right upfront in intake before they're even back in our general housing. Because we do want to get somebody that is on a medication or a prescription, we want to get that back to them as soon as possible on that medication. And we want to know medical issues before they're in our general housing so that they don't sneak up on us and, and then we have to turn around and call REMZA or somebody to, to take care of emergent medical issues. So in partnership with NAF Care, we were able to, to put this medical, the medical evaluation all the way upfront in intake. Some of the advanced technologies that we're working on or that NAF Care has or we're working on them with is tech, tech care records management system. That actually put all of our medical records and records management electronically. And that's great for obviously risk management, but also assisting us with the management of the jail. It's electronic and portable. Health, Health IE Nevada, this links Northern Nevada providers for continuity of care and it gives our NAF Care team instant access to medical records. So if we get an arrest EN, we know who that person is, they can look up medical records from the hospitals and anybody else that's a partner within this data sharing system and they can find out what their symptoms are. SureScript is another NAF Care initiation that gives them instant prescription access. So if somebody has a prescription filled in Northern Nevada, anywhere in Northern Nevada and I think California, they can see what that prescription is. Oftentimes we have people that come in that either are inebriated or don't, just don't remember who their physician is or what kind of medication they're on. So this helps our medical team evaluate somebody's prescription, again, to get them back on that prescription as quick as possible. And then artificial intelligence, I know this is scary and, and it's being talked about across the nation. I want you to know that, that artificial intelligence, this isn't being used for anything other than ensure that, that we know who somebody is so that we can get them the medical help that they need. Somebody comes in as a John Doe or somebody that this is to, and they're, it's still in a trial phase, they're looking at all of our data as far as pictures go to see if it's even possible. But we truly think that for the medical purposes, that this is a good idea and, and could be useful in the future if we have somebody that's hard to identify, that we can identify at least their medical needs so that NAF Care can take care of them. And that is my presentation for this quarter. I appreciate your time and I apologize, Mr. Manager, for going over.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Yes, very, very extensive report. I do have questions from commissioners for you. I'm going to start with Commissioner John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chief Deputy Clark. I called you lieutenant forever. And it's, it's because, you know, this, I think it's very difficult to understand which is what.
We go back a long ways.
We go back a long ways, that's right. I have a question for your medical director or, and you don't have to do it now, but I did hear that the feds have opened up more opportunities for people who are not physicians, but physician's assistants, midwives, nurse practitioners to be able to prescribe buprenorphine, which is far more effective in terms of medication assistance therapy than what we're using now in terms of reducing relapses to opioid addiction and therefore obviously reducing opioids. And we did just get a report from the medical examiner, how much fentanyl has been causing deaths in this community and I'm sure the jail population and the death population probably overlap each other. And so I just would like an update from the sheriff when you get a chance to get yourself together and see how this rolls out because I do know buprenorphine is the most critical medication assistance therapy for opioids because it does reduce the, the cravings, which are untenable, I understand, and most importantly reduces the withdrawal symptoms, which more than anything informs the cravings, right, to, to avoid the severe flu-like symptoms. So if I could get some information on how that will be implemented, that was just announced today, so I know, I'm not asking anybody to put them on blast here, but just what the plans are from your medical side and your medical director on implementing this now that not just a doctor can prescribe this. And it's really going to help us in the rural areas where there aren't many doctors, but there are nurse practitioners and physician's assistants, et cetera.
I'll definitely let Pete talk on that topic, but just so you know, we have been using buprenorphine for a long time.
Oh, well then never mind, this is old news.
Extremely happy.
Well, thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, so part of becoming an official OTP program and official MAT is, well, one, we use buprenorphine or Subbutex, Suboxone, which they use in the community usually. We've been using that from, from day one along with methadone. However, we push more inductions on buprenorphine than we do for methadone because we see it as being more successful. And we like to push naltrexone or vivitrol, which is an opiate blocker and then curbs alcohol cravings. Currently, our main provider for the MAT program is a Currently, our main provider for the MAT program is a nurse practitioner. And this last year, we started a program where we have the UNR Physician Assistance Program. They started doing a rotation at, at the GO, which was a first for NAF Care on any site in the nation. And then also first for their program to have, to go into corrections. All of their PAs coming out of the program now have an ex waiver license. And so they're all available to pursue that option of getting their certification and providing buprenorphine or, you know, some of those other MAT medications. And we have a new PA who we hired on as our mental health professional that has the same waiver.
Thank you, Commissioner John. Commissioner Hill, I have you sign in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great update, Deputy Chief Clark. And I'm so excited about the bunk refurbishments. That's something that you know I'm very passionate about. Once we refurbish those 700, how close will we be at 100% of the bunks being safer for our inmates?
Once those 700, that, that will be, we have over, a little bit over 700 throughout the facility. So once those are done, that will be the first phase. And then, as we've spoken in the past, then we look at other issues. Is there plumbing fixtures? Is there, the safest in a, in a cell is having zero ways to tie off on anything. So we still, because our facility is, is, has aged very well, but original construction, there were toilets and sinks that were separated. Now what they've done is they've built the sink and the toilet in together so that there's no exposed plumbing and fixtures. And so we'll be looking at that next, ma'am.
Great. And I'm just curious, and I didn't ask this at your last presentation. Are, during COVID, did we have lower folks in the jail because of COVID? We weren't arresting people for lower level crimes or, and putting them in jail? Or was it because they weren't out and about?
That's a great question, ma'am. And I, I think a little of both. The sheriff asked his, his partnering chiefs and, and local law enforcement to really use their best judgment when making arrests. Not that if we, you know, not to make our community unsafe, but if it was a misdemeanor traffic warrant or something like that, to use discretion because we did want to reduce the population in our jail because we just didn't, there were so many unknowns. And, and I can tell you, the Reno Police Department, the Sparks Police Department, all of our local partners, they did a phenomenal job at really only arresting those that, that were, that, that could victimize our community or, or other means.
Great. And it would be so great to know what the data was on that. So if we were putting fewer people in the jail, did we have a reduction in crime? And I'm not saying today we would talk about this, but maybe at your next report. And does that work? Because I think there's some exciting things, you know, about looking at diversion programs for those lower level crimes. And how can this commission support you with that? And really support our neighbors to getting the help they need that's not necessarily in the jails? So I'd love if we could talk about that at our next meeting. But this is a great update. And I think for the citizens to understand what's happening in the jail quarterly is really awesome. Because they don't, you don't always think about it if you don't have a loved one or you yourself haven't had the interaction. And the care that you, again, the care that you obviously have for our inmate population and for your job, I just so appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Krishna Hill. Vice Chair Herman, I have you sign in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. DC Clark, I, I, we could just go DCJ. But I appreciate you coming, Jeff, I really do. Great, great presentation, very thorough. I was glad to hear that you are using the PA program as an intern program. I, I think it's extremely important. It gives them real world experience. Are we using interns anywhere else in the jail?
Yes, sir. We, we use interns down in, in the crime lab and we use interns throughout. This is a program that, that we've been working on for some time with the university. And, and we're trying to get it more than just mental health. We're trying to get actually the medical school to, to send students up there as well. It's a great learning environment and we believe that, that it could be very useful to the jail as well.
Yeah, no, and we're, we're looking through some of our other services with, with respect to the homeless, of everything from technology to psychology, I mean, and, you know, all points in between. So I, I was curious as to, you know, what your programs are. And I'd like to have a conversation with, I don't know who oversees that intern program, but a conversation with them offline, just to see how well it's went and, and kind of what the structure looks like. Why reinvent the wheel?
Yeah, one of the challenges that we've had in the past, as far as speaking from the jail and, and the physicians, is that typically when they're, when they're on these programs, they're paid. So there is a cost and, and we've certainly worked with UNR back and forth on this. And, and I'd love to have more discussions with you about it.
Yeah, I mean, there's no question that it, that it costs, but it's a huge savings over what it would cost to go out into the general market and get the same quality of, of applicant. Even though they are learning, they're, you know, they're the brightest of the brightest that are these, in these intern programs.
Yeah, and, and again, it, it shows the partnership that we have with our medical provider because what happens when they come in is they have to have somebody that's overseeing them. And so we have such qualified physicians at the jail. And, and again, NAF Care is allowing them to do this. And so they're managing these interns. And it, it's just a great program overall that Dr. Lawrence and, and Dr. Atwarty both support.
No, wonderful, great use of a regional resource. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Seeing no more discussion from, from the commissioners, Deputy Chief Clerk, are we, Chief Deputy, we appreciate you coming today and presenting to us. Is there public comment on this item?
We do have Anne Marie Grant on Zoom.
Thank you. Ms. Grant?
Anne Marie Grant, for the record, Sister Thomas Purdy, murdered by Washoe County Sheriff's Office deputies, asphyxiated to death. My brother didn't even make it out of the booking area alive. 10 minutes, they're hyping up NAF Care. All you have to do is Google NAF Care. It's pretty clear that they are not the gold standard. Jails, jails where NAF Care operated have the highest death rate in a three-year period. 20.2 people out of 10,000 die under their watch. Do the, do they, do they use, I want to know if the jail uses the three homicides at the hands of deputies, my brother Thomas Purdy, Nico Smith, and Justin Thompson, to train how not to kill people by putting them prone? I want to know if they train their deputies that prone restraint kills? Are they still using videos to train deputies? Does Deputy Clark have any inmate testimonials? Or are we supposed to just take his word that they're doing a great job? You county commissioners actually have the power to verify that with the inmate, so get up there and do that. I was told by an inmate who went in there wounded by other office, by cops, by Sparks PD, I think it was, that he was told he had COVID, but the medical staff refused to show him his results. Are they just trying to put him in the COVID unit to kill him? I'm just curious, so why aren't they showing him his results? And also, do the inmates have access to their records from NAF Care? I'd like to see, I see data, but I don't see any long-term data proving the overall increase in health of the inmates at the jail. Where's the data to support that statement? Will the new tactical robot be used against the inmates inside of the jail? Just curious. That's about all I have right now. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Seeing no further public comment, we're being, close public comment and bring it back to the board. This is for action, we can take, we can, looking for a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
I have a motion to accept the report. I have a second from Commissioner Herman. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Ladies and gentlemen, we're, we're running a little bit far behind today. I'd like to try to speed this up today. We're on to item 16. So, Mr. Manager, let's jump right into item 16, please.
Item 16 is a recommendation.
Your mic's off. Got your mic. There you go.
Test, test.
There you go.
Okay. Item 16 is a recommendation to approve amendment number four to agreement regarding November 2, 2000 Parks Trail and Open Space Bonds, Lake Tahoe Bike Path Project for Phase Four of the Lake Tahoe Bike Path Project between Washoe County and Tahoe Transportation District to authorize the use of, of remaining WC1 funds in the amount of $285,000 in prior disbursement of $41,136.67 for expenses associated with the purchase, planning, design, and development of the Old Incline Elementary School at 771 Southwood Boulevard in Incline Village, Nevada, and to extend the intern from June 30th, 2021 to December 31st, 2021, and authorize Assistant County Manager Dave Solaro to execute the amendment number four and all appropriate Tahoe Transportation District-related agreements and documents.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. We do have staff here available to answer questions on this. I believe we also have Mr. Carl Hasty, the Executive Director of Tahoe Transportation District, if, for any discussion. Is there a need for a presentation by the commissioners on this or anything specific? Commissioner Hill, I have you sign in first in regards to this.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a statement to the commissioners and the public about this item. I know that we've received some public concern about the commission moving forward with supporting the purchasing of the Tahoe, or supporting the Tahoe Transportation District in purchasing the old elementary school on Southwood Boulevard in Incline Village for a mobility hub. And I just would like to give the commissioners just a little bit of background. I've been working on this item since I came into the office in January. And I think that this is a really great opportunity to get public transportation up at Incline Village, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it must be at the old elementary school. What the TTD voted on was to accept a federal grant to purchase the old elementary school. But we also have funding to look at alternative sites, knowing that, and, and the FTA does these type of grants, knowing that transportation departments need to have secured facilities, secured property to move forward with public processes because that allows for them to look at other properties that may be a better fit for the community and to do a public process. And so I'm very committed on the TTD Board to move forward with looking at alternative sites and really looking with the community to see how we can find transportation opportunities in Incline Village and Crystal Bay and in the Tahoe area plan generally to ensure that we can get folks up to the lake in a safe manner and really reduce vehicles going into the basin and the traffic and the parking issues that have really been plaguing the community for years. So that's a commitment that I'm putting to the board on the record today. So you understand that this is very important for me to do this right and that I would love to see that the board move forward in support of this item because we really need to look at the long-term planning at Lake Tahoe and, and ensure that people have access, but also ensure that the, the folks who live there full-time don't have vehicles plaguing their community all year long, which is really what it's turned into, a very difficult situation. So thank you for letting me give a little bit of background on the item, Mr. Chairman, and I look forward to having the discussion.
All right. All right. Any other commissioners? I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Crump, can you come forward, please, on this item? Specifically, it's outlined in the agenda that 326,136.67 would be utilized from WC1 funds. Now, understandably, the WC1 was passed back in 2005?
2004?
2000.
2000. So we're 21 years into these funds. They have been used a number of different ways, but specifically, what can these funds be used for? I mean, is, I mean, there has been a comment that's been brought up, but can we put that on the record, what these funds can be used for?
Sure. For the record, Eric Crump with Washoe County's Community Services Department. So the way Washoe County has been tracking these funds, we refer to it as WC1, but it's somewhat of a nuance. So back in 2001, this bond measure was passed. Washoe County has received approximately $28 million for all the approved projects that were identified during that, that bond. We have, all those projects have been substantially complete. We put in over $50 million towards that. So we only, we received 28 million. That money has gone to all those projects. Those projects are done. We track it under the WC1 because it's tied, but one could make an argument, they're not truly WC1 funds. We have expended all of those bond funds through leveraging, through interest, through other revenue, those types of things. So we track it in, in that pool, so to speak. But again, received 28 million, 50 million got put on the ground.
Okay. So, well, I have some concern that we're listing it as WC1 funds, but yet we're, we're not, it's not really WC1 funds, as you pointed out. So that's, obviously that's a nuance for the, the general public that are reading their agendas and saying, we're supposed to be utilizing this for parks and recreation, yet it's not really WC1 fund. So I have some problems with that just because of the emails that I've, but thank you for the iteration on that. So as, as Commissioner Hill pointed out, this process has to go through, to, to retrieve, receive the federal grant and get the money for the federal grant, they have to identify a location for the, the transportation hub. But is that, as you pointed out, is that an availability to look at other spots? Other locations for a transportation hub within, within the basin?
Thank you. I, I would probably defer to Mr. Carl Hasty from TTD as he received those funds. He's more, more familiar with basically all the requirements of that fund. What this amendment does, it just authorizes the balance of an agreement that we've had with TTD dated back to 2015 that they haven't utilized. In terms of the other fund and what it can, or his other grant received by TTD, he would be better off, better off answering that.
Mr. Hasty, are you with, are you available via Zoom?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon.
Welcome, Mr. Hasty. So, Mr. Hasty, if you could answer that question for me, based upon potential other locations within the basin?
Yes, so we are, we are utilizing these funds under the auspices of Federal Transit Administration to do what's called a protective acquisition. And the school site being a public piece of property, which is very rare to find, and that's the arrangement that's been with the school board. It is to reserve that property so that it can't, won't be lost while we go through this process of evaluating all potential locations in Incline Village for what's the best one for a mobility site. We have been utilizing this site for a pilot, a seasonal transit service that ties to St. Harbor. In 2019, we had a ridership of, for the summer months, about 40,000 people in order to alleviate some of the congestion that happens in the unsafe parking on the highway. So this acquisition then is to preserve that property. Then we go through a site assessment. And if another location is determined to be the best one, then we will take the steps to acquire that site and go from there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hasty. And so specifically, if, if this site is acquired and, and created as a mobility hub, which I believe is definitely necessary within Incline Village for public transit, as a member of the RTC, have always strongly supported multimodal and transit opportunities to keep different communities safe. Will this transit hub be utilized for the Tahoe area regional transportation buses? The Sotart buses, they will utilize this? Or is there going to be a different type of bus that utilizes this transit facility?
This, fair question. This is an investment for the future and it is part of what's establishing a regional transportation system at the lake and can serve for connection, not only internal to the basin, but external to the basin, which is part of the long-term goal as well.
Okay. Thank you. I, I have no further questions at this time. I have no further questions at this time. Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a legal question, and I appreciate the desire to find another location, but, Mr. Edwards, it appears as what's before us today, in the subject line, it says, you know, $285,000 in the prior disbursement of $41,136.67 for expenses associated with the purchase, planning, and design of the Old Incline Village School at 771 Southwood Boulevard, Incline Village, Nevada. So what's before us today is purchasing this site, it appears to me, not, not going out and looking for other sites.
You're exactly right. Your agenda is today to approve the use of these funds for the site listed in the agenda item. It may be that down the road, the project administrators decide that there's a better site that they may want to use or something along those lines, but before these funds could be redirected for some other site, it would have to be brought back and reapproved by you to specify that site. So you're right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crump, one, a couple of questions, and I apologize for my ignorance on this. This is just a little bit outside of my scope of what I constantly work on. With these funds, that says that it would expire, this would be the extension of these terms from June 23 to the end of the year, what happens if these, if this amendment expires? Does, what happens to those funds? Those funds just go away? Can you explain that to me?
Yes, so for the record, again, Eric Crump with Washoe County's Community Services. So pursuant to the original agreement, any unused funds would go back into this fund that Washoe County Parks utilizes for many of these projects. So if they don't go to TTD, they would come back if they're unused.
So necessarily, if it didn't get approved today, this is something that you could come back and get further funding down the road from these funds? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct. There's very, there's very little funds left, but yes.
Okay, all right, all right. Just, I just, I want to know what happens with that, those 326,000. And then, Mr. Hasty, one last question for you that I forgot to ask. It says purchase, planning, and design and development of the site. Is this mostly going to be towards the planning and design of the facility itself, but it talks also about the planning and design for the usage of overflow parking? Is it going to be more for that for the summer? Because I know that parking is a very big issue, like getting people to and from San Harbor and the beaches throughout. So is that really, I mean, I'm confused about what the money is specifically used for.
Understood. With the, this is Carl Hasty, District Manager for the Tahoe Transportation District. So these funds for us really become matched dollars to the federal dollars. So they leverage the federal dollars for the acquisition.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, those are all the questions I have. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner, Vice Chairman Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Crump, as, as part of the original approved projects, was there ever a mobility hub in that?
There was not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, seeing no further discussions or comments from any Commissioners, I will go to public comment. We do have public comments, and so, Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Mr. Pete Todoroff, followed by Ms. Denise Davis.
Mr. Todoroff, it's nice to see you.
Been a long time. Anyhow, I'm Pete Todoroff, 40-year resident in Incline Village. First of all, I think the county should really look at one thing that I've mentioned before, and I mentioned at my meeting that I hold every other Friday, is Southwood Boulevard, as Tahoe Incline Apartments are using Southwood Boulevard as a parking lot, extended parking lot. I think if you do something, you should address that item first before you approve any funds for this hub. Second of all, there's been a problem that has just happened this year, and that's the price of real estate going up. What the better use of that property would be is workforce housing. Why do I say that? Because I went to every single business in Incline Village, and that's what they said, that would be the best use because that's the largest property we have left to build on. So giving example, there's a business in town that are losing two workers, and they're going to have to leave Incline Village and move down to Reno. So those people are not going to be able to go from Reno to Incline Village to go to work every day. So a better use of the property, which every business in town, Hyatt, Ivkid, Rayleigh's, any businesses you can think of, say, what they would like to see that property used for is workforce housing, so these businesses can stay together and keep going. This place that they lost two of their employees, they're closing down. They cannot have it. And if you want to make a bus hub, we have a bus hub in Tahoe City. It's a huge piece of property because they've got a lot more property than Incline does. And you know how many people are riding the bus? Four. Four and five. How do I know? Because I've seen them. Also, we have, the bus system has been free for a year and a half. I've been working on this project with Carl Hasty for several years, not just since January, but for several years with Marcia, and before that, we've been working on this forever. And they are bound and determined to use this property for a bus hub. I gave them an alternate property right off Highway 28. There's the old Chevron gas station, and there's a Stanley's Restaurant. They go right off Highway 28, go up in there, and there are plenty of places to park vehicles. It's not blocking anything because in the wintertime, a bus hub would be a disaster on Southwood Boulevard. Why? Because it's a one-lane road when we get snow and people coming from Mount Rose and people coming from Southwood can't get down to the post office.
Thank you, Mr. Todoroff.
Ms. Denise Davis.
Welcome, Ms. Davis. Can we get the overhead, please?
Hello, I'm Denise Davis from Incline Village. I appreciate everyone's comments so far about this project. To be clear, I am not opposed to a mobility hub. I am opposed to this site. And with respect to Mr. Hardy, or Mr. Hasty, I mean, every time the community has talked with him about a mobility hub, the only site he will discuss is the old elementary school site. That is why we are concerned, and that is why we keep telling you this is not a good site. So in case you're not familiar with the area, I brought a little map, just a Google map, and I highlighted the roads. First of all, this is the old school site. A big reason why there's two buildings there is because that site is not level. That entire site is tiered. This open area at the top is the old outdoor field. That's on a higher tier than the next building. The next building is at a lower tier, and this area down here is at still a lower tier. That's the old parking lot for the teachers. The other thing I want to highlight is this road comes down here. This is one of our shopping centers, and you'll notice the post office is located there. The reason that's important is a high percentage of residents in Incline do not have home mail delivery. So a high, high percentage of us either have a post office box, or we use one of the two private mailbox services in town, of which one is also located right here in the shopping center. The only way to get to this shopping center is off of Southwood onto May's Boulevard. So this is traffic that's going on already. Also, these are two-story office buildings. These are two-story office buildings, so there is traffic in this area. So just to give you an idea, I didn't know Pete would talk about the parking, but just to give you an idea, I took pictures yesterday of the situation on the street. I'm going to start down here and work my way north. So this is this section. Yesterday, there were 16 cars parked there at 5:30. Just for an up close, that's what it looks like. You've got people parallel to the street, in, out. This is further up the street in this parking area. It's full.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Appreciate you.
Ms. Davis, if I can have those documents.
Provide your documents to the clerk.
Next up on Zoom, we have Doug Graham.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, thank you. I had three questions, and you can respond after I recite them, it's fine, or put them on the board for board action. The first one is, to be clear about the funding that's available from the government other places, does it depend on the old militaries, or old elementary school? And it appears that it does not. So I'd like to ask that you can make a more clear explanation of that to the residents. Secondly, has there been a, what I now understand is an NEPA analysis or EIS or EIR done focused on traffic safety and fire safety for the old elementary school, if this should, the TTD should go ahead and put a hub there? And lastly, this is kind of interesting. How will TTD hub riders be alerted that they're not allowed, they're not allowed on beaches that they see right in front of them in Incline Village? I would anticipate there's going to be a lot of very unhappy people and that the Sheriff's Office will have to increase their presence there to no great social benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. I appreciate it.
Next up, we have Aaron Katz on Zoom.
Mr. Katz.
Hello, Aaron Katz again. Thank you for the opportunity. I emailed the clerk earlier today a copy of my December 1920 letter on enclosures that has the bond measure, so you can see what approved use was for the bond. Mr., if you take a look at the agenda item, it expressly states that this money will be use of remaining WC bond funds. And then, when he gave oral testimony, he's waffling on that. Well, your attorney will tell you a requirement of agendas are that they be clear and complete. And if what he's saying is accurate, it's the last thing from clear and completeness. So I think you need to move forward with what you told the public, and that is, it's the use of remaining WC1 funds, and it's a misuse. I find it totally disingenuous to claim, gee, we partnered these funds to get 50 some odd million dollars, and we can cherry pick and tell you where the remaining funds came from. And I say, no, you can't cherry pick. You told us where it's from. And with due respect to Trustee Hill, this agenda item has nothing to do with the merits of this hub. It's dealing with the use of funds which are restricted, and we should not deviate from what is represented to the public. Let's just deal with the funds. The value of this hub can be determined sometime later. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Katz.
Next up on Zoom is Judith Miller.
Good afternoon, Judith Miller. I just wasn't clear from my husband's statement, but in my mind, this is violating the open meeting law because your agenda is not clear and complete. You might want to run that by your legal counsel as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Next, we have 42 emails that were submitted for the record. Would you like me to read the names?
Could you please read the names?
Emails came from Shirley Rocks.
Actually, Ms. Clerk, how many, you have 42 emails?
Forty-two. They will be placed on file for the record.
Yeah, let's just place them on the file for the record, please. All right. Seeing no further public comment, is there any further public comment?
There is not.
All right, seeing none. All right, bring it back to the Board. At this time, looking for motion and direction on this item. Commissioner Hill.
I'm happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I move to approve Amendment Number Four to Agreement Regarding November 2020, or 2020, Parks Trails and Open Space Bonds, Lake Tahoe Bike Path Project, Parks WC1 for Phase Four of the Lake Tahoe Bike Path Project between Washoe County and Tahoe Transportation District to authorize the use of remaining WC1 funds in the amount of $285,000 in prior disbursement of $41,136.67 for expenses associated with the purchase, planning, design, and development of the old elementary school at 771 Southwood Boulevard, Incline Village, Nevada, and to extend the term from June 30, 2021 to December 31, 2021, and to authorize Assistant County Manager Dave Salerno to execute the Amendment Number Four and all appropriate Tahoe Transportation District-related agreements and documents.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Hill in a second. Seeing, seeing no, sorry.
Under discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, I have, I have legal counsel, just Mr. District Attorney.
Yes, I think a question's been raised about the status of the funds. There was a statement during the staff presentation that they are arguably not WC1 funds. Two of the public commenters raised that issue. The agenda item does characterize them in that way, so I think it'd be worth a discussion and maybe some questions from the Board here of staff or the presenters to get some clarification on the status of these as WC1 funds or not.
Okay. All right, thank you, District Attorney Edwards. To that extent, Mr. Crump, can you come up, please? Mr. Crump, to validate the discussion in regards to what has been said by the District Attorney and brought up in public comment based upon the agenda, are these, are they not WC1 funds?
For the record, Eric Crump with Washoe County's Community Services Department. Again, it would be difficult to characterize them based on what we know as WC1 funds specific to those bonds. We carry them in the W1 Fund that we call within Washoe County, so not related to the bonds, but certainly WC1 funds. So I can understand the confusion.
Okay. All right. Vice Chairman, you had a question for legal.
I just, I just have a, it's a statement.
Okay, statement, I apologize.
I recognize what's before us, and I, I think that there's merit, but what concerns me is what's, what's before us today is the purchase of this property. I think that there are other properties out there that may be more suitable, and so for that very reason, because what's on the subject line is very clear to me, for that very reason, I just, I can't support this today. I, I think that there's, there's a need for a mobility hub, but I just don't see that this is the right location. I think that there's other things that could go in this location. I know that Mr. Todoroff brought up workforce housing. I think that that's, that certainly is a discussion that merits further investigation. I know that there's been talk by some to have a justice center there. So I, I just, I just question the, just the ingress egress of this particular, this particular site. It's just really difficult for me to support this at this particular time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's go. I will, seeing no further discussion by the Commission, I'll call for the vote from the Commissioners. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, nay, nay. Motion, please affirm, please affirm your votes on the screen. Motion fails three to two with that, just at that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harton.
But, Mr. Edwards, what's, what other options do we have today under But, Mr. Edwards, what's, what other options do we have today under this agenda Can we, can we set those funds aside so that they can potentially be used for a different mobility hub or are we, are we locked in at this time?
For today, you're, you're tied to the identification of the site and use in the agenda item. It could be brought back, you know, at a future meeting and with other language to identify other options, but not today.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing no further discussion on this, we will move out of this item. We will move on to, Mr. Manager, in the, in the essence of time today, I'm going to move, we're not going to hear item 17. I will move item 17 possibly to the next meeting if that's okay with you and the Assistant County Manager. Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, is it timely manner? We are going to lose a commissioner here and I want to make sure we get through the public hearings.
Okay.
And there's no real need for items 19 either today. There is no update. So I'd like to pull items, not pull, but delay those until a future meeting. And 17 and 19, and we'll move right into item 18 if that's okay.
Okay, item 18 is a presentation and possible action on the fiscal year 2122 Washoe County Strategic Plan, including a status update of fiscal year 2021, strategic initiatives as they are, as they relate to the county's force, strategic initiatives, fiscal sustainability, economic impacts, vulnerable populations, and innovated services. I believe we have Dana Cersei by Zoom.
Ms. Cersei.
I'm right here.
She's right here in front of us.
Well, that's better than.
She's right here, right here in person.
I see, it's the upgraded version.
Welcome, Ms. Cersei.
Good afternoon. In an effort to keep this extremely brief for you, I'm going to cover two slides. We would like to just say that there is a highlights reel. This slide deck has been put together by all of our goal teams to show you all the accomplishments that have been accomplished over FY '21. So Erica, if you could please take us to slide two. Each year, we have an annual process that begins with the board in January with our workshop. The direction that comes out of that board sets the direction for both the strategic plan and also the budget process. From there, we meet with our department heads and our subject matter experts to look for additional feedback. And then we sit down with our county manager and our assistant county managers to refine all of that direction and feedback into the recommendation that's before you today. From here, we're looking for just your okay with the direction we're moving and then we will work with our goal teams to develop the full action plans rounding out the strategic plan document for FY '22. And last slide, Erica, please. And so these, in, this last slide has all of the proposed goals and initiatives for FY '22. There's not a lot of change from this current year. And I'm happy to take any questions that you guys have.
That was really very fast. I didn't expect it to be that fast, Ms. Cersei, but thank you, I appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Cersei in regards to the strategic planning process?
Nope. The holograph is amazing. Looks just like you.
Thank you, Ms. Cersei, we do appreciate that. Any questions, I'm sure we'll get back to you with more, more discussion on, at a later time and date.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We, no need to take a motion on this as it is presented. All right, Madam Clerk, was there any public comment assigned in on this item?
There was nobody signed in.
All right, seeing none. We'll move to items 20. We're in the, this is the public hearing, open the public hearing for items 20 and 21. Mr. Manager, can you please take us into the public hearing on items, item 20?
Item 20 is a public hearing pursuant to NRS 533.550 for possible action to adopt resolution R21-003 approving a water rights lease between Sky Tavern and Nevada Nonprofit Corporation in Washoe County for approximately 4,590, 4,000, not, four, what did I say? 4.5972, sorry about that, acre feet of water rights associated with the Brown Creek, the Cree, decree, Washoe County one-half interest in proof of vested right V-02748 for the purpose of snowmaking in support of the Sky Tavern Junior Ski Program. Leasee shall pay a rental fee of $1 for the term of the lease through October 31, 2049, including all taxes and assessments, filing, and permit fees associated with the use of the water rights, having made all four written finding pursuant to NRS 5333.550.
All right, this is a public hearing in regards to this item for the water rights. Any discussion or need for a presentation from, for the commission? Seeing none from any of the commissioners? All right, look at this time. Madam Clerk, is there any public, public comment on this item?
I'm seeing none.
All right, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman.
I see these as almost non-consumptive, although it's not truly non-consumptive. The making of snow, the water goes right straight back into the ground. So I would move to adopt resolution R21-003 approving a water right lease between Sky Tavern and Nevada Nonprofit Corporation in Washoe County for approximately 4.5972 acre feet of water rights associated with the Brown's Creek decree. Washoe County is one-half interest of the proof invested rights, proof invested right V-02748 for the purposes of snowmaking in support of Sky Tavern Junior Ski Program. Leasee shall pay a rental fee, rental fee of $1 for the term of the lease through October 20, October 31, 2049, including all taxes and assessments, filing, permit fees with use of the water right, having made all four findings pursuant to NRS 533.550.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chairman, second from Commissioner Hill, called for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Please, please place your votes on the record. Maybe? Getting there?
Trying. Working.
Sorry.
It's okay. Please place your votes on the screen.
All right.
Commissioner Hill?
Yep.
I have nothing on my screen.
She was an aye if you.
Oh, you're an aye, yeah.
If you can vote on her behalf. All right, please affirm your, please affirm your votes on the screen. Motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item, the second portion of our public hearing, item 21.
Item 21 is a public hearing pursuant to NRS 277.050 to consider any objections to the resolution of intent to execute an amendment easement agreement and amended easement deed between Washoe County and the Truckee Meadows Water Authority to change an existing access and water facilities easement from plus or minus 11 dot, 11.0802 square feet to plus or minus 20 dot 425 square feet and to amend the terms of the temporary easement totaling plus or minus 23 dot 588 square feet to allow for the construction, installation, and maintenance of temporary below-ground water line on APN 534 dash 521 dash 01, part of the Sugarloaf Peak Open Space at the additional appraised value of $1,485. Possible approval of said amended easement agreement and amended easement deed, and if approved, authorize the chair to execute the amended agreement and amended deed to that effect.
All right. Seeing that this is a public hearing for this item, I will go to the public comment first. Is there any public comment on these, on this item, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair, I have nobody signed in.
All right, seeing nobody signed in.
Mr. Chair.
Public comment, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'd make a motion to approve an amended easement, agreement, an amended easement deed between Washoe County and the Truckee Meadows Water Authority to change an existing access and water facilities easement from plus or minus 11,802 square feet to 20,000, plus or minus 20,425 square feet and to amend the terms of the temporary easement totaling plus or minus 23,588 square feet to allow for the construction, installation, and maintenance of a temporary below-ground water line on APN 534 dash 521 dash 01, part of Sugarloaf Peak Open Space at an additional appraised value of $1,485. And authorize the chair to execute the amendment and the agreement as amended, an amended deed to that effect.
Second.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Herman. We've taken public comment, we have a motion and a second to approve. Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Mr. Manager, that concludes our business for the day. Can you please take us into our final public comment, sir?
Item 22 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment signed in?
I have Ms. Denise Davis here in chambers.
All right, Ms. Davis. Can we get the overhead, please?
Hello again, Denise Davis, Incline Village. I wanted to talk to you a minute about some safety concerns. So as I was researching our previous discussion, I noticed this is a Jeep trying to thread its way in to this tiny little turnaround, now a parking area at these apartments. That's a Jeep. An ambulance might be able to get in there. A fire truck, the size that's needed for these buildings, is not going to get in there. Here's what, here's what the other end of this looks like. They're parked in the accessway. Again, a fire truck is not going to be able to get in there. If those buildings catch on fire, see what's between all these buildings? Trees. Fire goes up, as it goes up the building, the trees catch on fire. And as the trees catch on fire, they create their own atmosphere and microclimate and pretty soon, we have embers from these trees on fire blowing across Incline. So, you know, these are the things that when we talk to you guys about fire, this is what we see. So we would appreciate some attention and some help when we point these things out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
On Zoom, we have Ms. Anne Marie Grant.
Ms. Grant.
Anne Marie Grant, for the record, sister to our Ms. Partey, murdered by Reno Police and Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Recently, Washoe County Sheriff Darren Balam released his Washoe County dashboard with false information stating that there were zero homicides at the jail since the year 2000. Well, we all know that's a lie since my brother was one of three men that were homicides at the hands of deputies. He only fixed it once called out by the Reno Gazette for their, the propaganda they're trying to sling. And oftentimes, I hear you say, many of you on the board, that, oh, people get mad at us for the wrong reason. It's not our job. We don't have the power to do X, Y, Z. Guess what? You literally have the power to reappropriate the money that you give. You dictate the sheriff's budget. You have the money to divert it to other resources that help the community because that's what the community needs, not more policing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
I have nobody else signed in.
No further public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission. We are on to item 23. Mr. Manager, do you have any final announcements today?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, I see none from the commission. We are adjourned, thank you very much.